Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting of February 25th, 2020. Call this meeting to order. Thank the Garden Club for their arrangement. May I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Mason.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. Thank you. May I please ask, if I could, for the Pledge of Allegiance and if I might ask Melissa to lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Melissa. Public comments on items not on the agenda. Speaker cards, please.
John Barrellier.
I'm here to again talk about the safety of the intersection of Cunningham and Crystal Springs Road. Two months and 246 senior citizens' signatures ago, I asked on their behalf for a safer intersection based on the proposition that they were entitled to safety, not solely on their age, which had been considered enough by previous generations, but by a common sense concept which was evidenced by an almost daily close encounter with a vehicle very anxious to turn right and get to the big city via 280. When a fender brushes your thigh, you know it's close. We are now engaged in a great uncivil tug-of-war to test whether this government or any city government can escape the responsibility of protecting its seniors at the one intersection they use the most. We don't need or want an excuse because that would include why it can't be done or why safety is delayed. This only adds to our frustration and distrust. Will we be the victims of death by committee? Nothing, nothing is more important. When a senior gets injured or killed at that intersection, your first thought should be, could we have avoided this? Not, are we covered by insurance? Remind me to attend the funeral. Those who don't honor the cane should be made to trip over it. Don't tell me how it can't be done. Don't even tell me how it can be done, just do it. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards? Is there anybody else here this evening that wishes to speak on something that is not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to announcements and presentations. Under Item A, our first is to receive a presentation from the San Mateo County Census on, of course, the important Census 2020. Is this Megan?
Yes, I am.
Please, welcome.
Thank you. Excellent. Mayor Medina, councilmembers, city staff, thank you so much for having me here this evening. My name is Megan Gosh. I work for the county of San Mateo, County Manager's Office of Community Affairs, and I'm here to talk to you about ensuring a complete count in the Census 2020. So just a brief history, and I'll go through this fairly quickly. We've been doing this every 10 years since 1790. So we're at our 230th dicennial census. It's required by the Constitution that everyone participate and be counted regardless of citizenship status or criminal history. So what does the census matter? It's about money and power. So the power is representation, reapportionment of congressional seats. It is estimated that California will lose one congressional seat per this census, and it's also about money. There's $1 trillion in federal funding allocated every year. The state of California receives about $115 billion of that, and it's based solely on population numbers. The Census Bureau takes confidentiality very seriously. Every Census Bureau employee takes an oath for life to protect the data, and so the results are confidential. They're not shared with any department within the government. For 72 years, it's only presented as statistics. It's never an individualized household. So in 16 days, every resident will start receiving invitations to participate in the census. I'll say that again, 16 days. I've been working on this for two and a half years. So it is amazing to me that we're 16 days away from this actually happening. Starting the 12th, people will receive invitation to participate. Eighty-eight percent of our county will be invited to participate online, which is very new. The other 12% will either have hand-delivered or mailed paper versions of the census questionnaire. There'll be four reminder postcards. After the fourth reminder, they will send paper surveys to each household. Starting May 13th, if residents have not completed their survey, that is when U.S. Census Bureau non-response follow-up individuals, called enumerators, will go door-to-door to ask residents to participate. We are recommending then to avoid someone coming to your door, answer quickly, and do it online preferably so we can see submission results, which is new this dicennial. We will have access to real-time data on a day-to-day basis by census tract to see where submissions have occurred, so we'll know if there's areas that we need to go and do outreach and focused messaging to those areas. So letters are bilingual. They will also include 12 English or non-English numbers for assistance. This is what the actual online form looks like. It'll also be available in 12 languages. You can see from this little video, you can toggle from each language that you may need. On your letter inviting you to participate, you'll have a 12-digit census ID. You enter that into the form, it'll show you the address and ask you to verify that address. You don't need to have that 12-digit ID, though. We guess that a lot of people probably will lose that invitation, they may not have it. There's a button that you can actually press and just enter your address. But something else that's new is those that are homeless or housing unstable, you can actually enter a location in a van behind safe way, and that way, all of our homeless folks that are housing unstable can be counted as well. The Census Bureau will be doing a homeless count on March 31st, and so they're working towards that right now to have all the folks trained to do that effort. At the end of the survey, you will be asked to review your answers, and then you'll receive this submission confirmation form. We're asking folks to take a picture of that because there's a lot of community-based organizations and businesses that are having raffles or some sort of prizes for people to participate. So the online version is in 12 languages plus English, but there are 59 language guides as well. And so we have questionnaire assistance kiosks located throughout the entire county. Every library in the county, city and county library is participating, including San Bruno. We had a training this morning, we went over the whole questionnaire assistance kiosk information. They'll have binders of all the language guides to assist residents. There'll also be large print and braille as well. So what have we been doing? There's a lot of challenges to complete this census. I've alluded to some of them already. There's underfunding. The Census Bureau has less offices and less field staff. It's moving primarily online, which raises lots of concerns about data security, literacy barriers, and there's a fear and general lack of trust in the federal government. People don't want to share their personal data on the internet. And even though the citizenship question was not on the survey, it is not on the survey, it already raised a tremendous amount of anxiety among our immigrant communities. So what is at stake? We talked about the money. In 2016, we allocated $76 billion from the federal government. California is one of the few states that is a giving state. We pay more in taxes than we get back from the federal government. That money goes to our most critical community programs like WIC, Head Start, Section 8 Housing, school lunches, special education and transportation projects. All of these things are at risk of losing funding. And did you know that three out of every four Californians belong to one or more groups that tend to be undercounted? And so many of these groups are homed right here in San Mateo County. Thirty-five percent of our residents speak a language, or excuse me, 35% of our residents are foreign-born. Forty-seven percent speak a language other than English at home, and there's more than 100 languages spoken in our county. California is the hardest-to-count state in the entire nation. Children under five are also undercounted, and why is that, you may think? There's confusion about shared custody. You may think that your partner may be claiming them on their form. There's people that are new to the area, newborns. People oftentimes forget to mark their newborns on the questionnaire. So we're working with other community-based organizations, we're working with First Five, Sesame Street just put out a whole census set of videos and outreach tools that are really great, that we've been promoting those as well. And again, the potential impact, not enough affordable housing. Public transportation won't meet demand, traffic could get worse, families have less support, schools won't have enough resources, health services could be limited, and emergency planning would be off the mark. And it's not just for this year, it's for the next 10 years that this will impact us. So in order to do our outreach and prepare for this, we've set up a multi-tiered approach. We have our steering committee made up of department heads, representatives from elected officials, as well as city managers from some hard-to-count cities. We then have a complete count committee made up of about 50 cross-sector organizations, including libraries, transportation, schools, healthcare, and then we are working with community-based organizations as our action team. So they are the ones that are on the ground, working as trusted messengers in their communities in language. As part of that, we have released about $1.3 million in contracts to our community-based organizations. We've had, excuse me, four rounds of funding, and these are some of the organizations that we are funding. But it's not just San Mateo County that's providing funds, it's United Way Bay Area and the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. So between the three of us, we've allocated about $3 million just to San Mateo County organizations. So the million-dollar question, how can you help? There's so much that everyone can do. Oops, let me go back there. We have on our website, it's our outreach resources, we have videos, PSAs, flyers, collaterals, multiple languages. We also have tools, a messaging guide, and a communication calendar. Every week, I send out an email to people with a theme for the week, and we talk about key messaging, talking points, Twitter and Facebook posts, and images to just make it copy and paste and make it easy for everyone to share information. We have a texting campaign in place as well, and also, one of our U.S. Census Bureau partnership specialists, Teresa, is here, and they are still promoting and recruiting in our county. And so now they are looking for these non-response follow-up individuals. It's $30 an hour, it's part-time, it's flexible hours, and they stopped recruiting March 31st. And lastly, talk about the census. If you have two or more people in a room, talk about the census. Ask them if they know it's online this time. You'd be surprised how many people do not know that it's online. Encourage people you know to self-respond early. Incorporate messaging into your communications, your newsletters, and remember the three census key points, the what, the why, and the how. It's every 10 years. It's really important because the census count is used to make lots of important decisions, and that's where you can customize the message to the folks that you're talking to. Make it relatable to them and important to what they find are their needs. And then lastly, the how. You can fill it out starting March, online, by phone, or on paper. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council? Linda, please.
So thank you for the work that you do. I was a census counter years ago in San Mateo. My question is, what is being done to try to enhance the, I guess, the show-up or the turnout of the temporary residents, as you mentioned?
Do you mean specifically what temporary residents?
I think you used the word temporary residents, but undocumented, there's a number of, a myriad of.
We're working with a lot of community-based organizations. So we, as a county, are providing outreach, but we know that we're not the messengers that people want to hear it from. So we're working with Puente and Resta Casa and Job Train and lots of organizations that primarily work with our undocumented communities along the coast and within North Fair Oaks, East Palo Alto and the park. So we're working with them to provide them with outreach materials and tools that they then customize and go out into the field and speak to people.
And who would be your service provider or contact person here in San Bruno?
I'll have to look through my whole list of individuals. We have, there's many organizations funding that are covering San Bruno. I can't remember off the top of my head, there's like at least five. I have a map that was shown previously. I think it's in your packet, if you have it printout as well. It should list them, but I can make sure you get that information. On our website, too, we also show everyone that's funded.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
I don't really want to thank you for coming out, and I know it's important, and I know that the county is working diligently, and it's been interesting to me because there are so many folks with different hats. And I've spoken to one who was looking for meeting facilities, spoken to another who handles another facet of it, of looking, where can they go in San Bruno in order to try to get the word out to, like you said, they want to hear it from others, specifically maybe people that they know that it's okay to participate, that they don't have to fear anything. So I do want to thank you for all the work, because as you said, you've got, what, 15, 16 days? And I know you've been waiting two and a half years for it. So thank you for being here this evening, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now we're going to move on to Items B, C, and D, and Melissa is going to be standing in for Joanne.
Yes. The San Bruno Library will be presenting another installment in the Coffee in the Cosmos series on Saturday, February 29th, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. in the downstairs community room. The featured speaker will be Dr. Nick J. Scott, Lead Research Scientist at NASA's Ames Research Center in California's Silicon Valley. Please join us for a talk, some refreshments, and an informal Q&amp;A session. Are you an artist who has 2D works you would like to display at the San Bruno Library? If so, the San Bruno Culture and Arts Commission invites you to apply for the Community Art Gallery Program. Application deadline is March 20th. For more information and an application, please visit the Culture and Arts Commission's webpage or call program liaison Tim Wallace at (650) 616-7084. The Recreation Department is accepting applications for various part-time positions for summer employment for both camp and aquatic programs. Interviews will be scheduled in April. If you are interested in applying, please visit the calops.org website or pick up an application at the Recreation Center.
Thank you, Melissa. Let's move on to Item E, receive report and review status of local emergency related to repairs to Crestmore Canyon and continuing declaration of local emergency. City manager, or I'm sorry, I apologize, Mr. Tan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Public Works Director, Jimmy Tan. I'm here to provide a brief update on the Crestmore Canyon project. Since our last council meeting, we made some additional progress on the project. The contractor, Hillside Drilling, continued their tieback installations and completed the installation of all the tiebacks on February 13th. They also began demobilizing their equipment from the site during that time. And starting on the 18th of February, contractor commenced the performance testing of these tiebacks. And the testing is done to ensure the tiebacks will be able to achieve the design loads. So as we were testing, four out of the 12 tiebacks have failed, and so the contractor ended up grounding those tiebacks so that they can be tested again at a later time. The contractor will be resolving those tieback locations next week, doing some additional testing on those. So just have some pictures to show you as well here. These are some of the pictures I've shown the last time, how the tiebacks were installed here. And this kind of shows the performance testing that they do, you know, all the tiebacks are drilled into the, below the surface, so they're actually having to do a pull test to measure the actual, the strength, the pounds of the force of these tiebacks. So there's a zoom picture here, a couple of guys, and there's equipment that I circled here, it's a little hard to see, but there's a gauge there that shows the actual force that's being measured for these tiebacks. So, you know, the contractor, as I mentioned, the contractor will be continuing to test these tiebacks, the ones that have failed, and hopefully by next week, everything will be resolved. So this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Tan? We do have a speaker card also.
Thank you, sir, for your comment on the Crestmore area and the update. I am curious, what is the remainder of the funds that is left over from the lawsuit that we had when the explosion occurred? Also, every time I see a bunch of PG&E trucks around, I wonder to myself, is there another leak that they detected? I also heard that PG&E is filing for bankruptcy, so I don't know if that's going to impact us in the future somehow, but I would like to know how that's going to somehow affect everyone who uses the service of PG&E. I also would like to suggest that the public comment be placed on the bottom of the agenda so that people who are here less than 10 minutes late can have an opportunity to comment on all of the things, the items that are on the agenda. I originally came here because of Don Pico Restaurant that's being replaced with the liquor store. I cannot believe that you guys are doing that. And if you know what are the hallmarks of a ghetto or the hood, it would be liquor stores and many places of worship. So that is something, it seems like, you guys are more concerned about, as well as starting a cannabis club here in San Bruno. It would generate a lot of revenue. Yes, Rico?
Excuse me, please. This is in regards to the San Bruno.
Right, I did say that in the beginning of my comment.
Right, so that's the topic we need to stay on.
And then I'm finishing my comments that I was originally coming here for. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council members.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, now we'll move on to consent.
All items on the consent calendar are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Are there any items that we want a separate vote on and want them pulled for a separate vote? Are there any items that we want to have discussion or a comment made prior to motion?
Yes, Item A.
Item A, accounts payable, okay. Anything else? Okay, so on Item A, under consent, accept accounts payable, February 10th, 2020. Linda.
Well, I just wanted, I had a question about, I just have it on my notes. I believe it's page six of the packet, of the 200-page packet. There's a charge for $5,230 for Lydia's Italian Deli, and I was just wondering if the city has any policies or procedures that ensures that our staff or for any events, we're using local delis, since we have at least five off the top of my head that I can, I know of. Lydia's is in South San Francisco.
City manager.
We do not have local purchase preferences by policy. We do strive to use local businesses as often as possible.
I believe that is, that's a policy that the council can initiate, correct?
Yes, all of our financial policies are set by the City Council.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Any action on consent?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion made in second to approve consent calendar Items A through E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear a 5-0 voice of approval. We'll move on to item number six, public hearing.
Item 6A, hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution establishing an underground utility district on Crystal Springs Road between Cunningham Way and El Camino Real.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Jimmy Tan, Public Works Director. As the City Clerk mentioned, I'll be presenting on the Rule 28 Underground Utility District project. The objective of the presentation tonight is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution to establish an underground district along Crystal Springs Road between Cunningham Way and El Camino. The other objectives are to provide the City Council and the public information on the Rule 28 and receive comments from the public regarding the proposed underground district. So you may have seen this presentation from the previous council meeting, I'm just going to go over it again once more as well. So these, agenda is as follows, I'll provide some background on the Rule 28 and answer why we're discussing the Rule 28 as well. The city, it shows the city completed Rule 28 projects, and briefly go over the requirements of the Rule 28, and provide the proposed underground and district locations, and talk about the current Rule 28 in terms of our available work credits, and provide information on the Crystal Springs Road Underground Utility District and the next steps. So since 1967, the conversion of overhead electrical utilities to underground is, in California, is performed by the California Public Utilities Commission Rule 20. So there are three different parts, Parts A, B, and C. And Part A is funded by PG&E, and Parts B and C are funded through entities other than PG&E ratepayers, such as governmental agencies or private entities through establishment of maintenance districts. So the way it works, PG&E allocates Rule 28 work credits to communities to finance the conversion of overhead to underground infrastructure. And the work credits are to be used for undergrounding local distribution lines, which deliver electricity to neighborhoods and are generally supported by wooden poles and not the high-voltage transmission lines. The work credits are disputed in proportion to the number of customer accounts, and City of San Bruno gets approximately $150,000 a year. So what is the purpose of undergrounding the utilities? So one is to improve the aesthetics. Being that the overhead utilities contain numerous wires for electric, telephone and fiber, it's very unsightly. The other is to remove the exposure of the utilities to the uncertain weather events such as high wind or rain or vehicle collision of these wooden poles. During high wind events, the overhead power lines, other utilities can detach from trees, from falling trees and creating public safety issues. So by undergrounding the utilities, it increases the service reliability and public safety. The City of San Bruno has an ordinance in place, municipal code Section 8.28, authorizing the City Council to designate areas where overhead utilities exist and form an undergrounding district. And the first thing the city must do is to identify a project that's in the interest of the public and pass a resolution forming an underground district. Then accrued Rule 28 work credits can be used to pay for the costs related to the undergrounding. So why are we discussing Rule 28 now? Recently, the CPUC passed a resolution, E4971, which would take away or transfer the Rule 28 work credits from inactive cities to the City of Live Oak, which is near part of Uba City. Many agencies are affected by the passage of the resolution, and San Bruno is one of those communities. A total of approximately $554,000 of these unused work credits will be transferred from communities that haven't participated in the Rule 28 program over the past eight years to the City of Live Oak. And for San Bruno, it's estimated about $29,272 will be transferred. And so in order to avoid this transfer, we must satisfy the following, formally adopt an undergrounding district, start or complete the construction of an underground conversion of the project within the past eight years from 2011 and on, and receive Rule 28 allocations from PG&E for only five years or fewer due to recent incorporation. And unfortunately, we don't qualify for Items 2 and 3, therefore, the adoption of an underground district is our only choice. So the city has completed undergrounding of overhead utilities in the past. This map shows all of the projects and the years that were completed. As noted, the oldest project was back in 1962 from El Camino, along El Camino between San Bruno Avenue and Santa Hania, and the latest project was completed in 1997 along Huntington Avenue between Forest Lane and Angus. And the two other main corridors were undergrounded, Sneeve Lane and as well as San Bruno Avenue. And to form an undergrounded district, staff contacted PG&E representatives to obtain additional information. PG&E representative mentioned that the agency must select an underground district location that is in the general public interest to satisfy one or more of the following reasons, as is shown on the slide there. The first is to underground, the underground will avoid or eliminate heavy concentration of overhead electrical facilities. The second, the street or roadway is extensively used by the general public and carries heavy volume of pedestrian or vehicle traffic. And the third, the street or roadway passes through a civic area, public recreation area or an area of unusual scenic interest to the public. And the fourth, the street or roadway is considered an arterial or major collector. So based on our discussion with PG&E representative, several locations that the city can perform an undergrounded district are shown here on the slide, and these locations have been vetted by PG&E. So there's multiple locations along Huntington, Mastick, Taylor, Angus, Masson, Crystal Springs Road, Genovin, and the lengths and cost of the entire projects are noted on the bottom left-hand corner as well. So this table shows the work credits, the total work credits that the city has. Each work credit is equal to $1, so the city has currently about over $6 million of work credits. If the city doesn't perform or doesn't pass a resolution tonight to establish an undergrounded district, about $29,000 will be transferred over to the City of Live Oak, and that will still leave a balance of a little bit over $6 million in the Rule 28 account. So based on our discussion, the direction from the City Council at the last meeting, the Crystal Springs Road Underground District was selected out of all the other proposed locations, and the reason for this corridor is that the Crystal Springs Road corridor meets all of the criteria listed in the PG&E requirements. The road has heavy concentration of overhead electrical facilities, does carry heavy volume of pedestrian and vehicle traffic, and the road joins a public recreation area, which is City Park, and is also part of the scenic corridor. And the road is also considered an arterial street. So the total length is approximately 3,700 feet, and total cost to underground the entire length is about $7.4 million, which will leave a shortfall of about $1.3 million. And therefore, staff is proposing And therefore, staff is proposing to perform the project in two different phases. Phase one, which is shown in green, will be from El Camino to Donner Avenue. And the phase two will be from Donner Avenue to Cunningham Way. We did talk to PG&E recently regarding the cost impacts to any of the residents in the area that are being, that the proposed undergrounding is being done. PG&E mentioned that, you know, everything, all the costs will be paid for and there will be no, no cost to the residents for the undergrounding of the facilities. So they'll pay for all the upgrades of the electrical panels that are required and as well as the services going back to the electrical panels from the new location of the underground locations. So. So this slide shows the boundary limits of the phase one undergrounding project along Crystal Springs Road from Donner to ECR. And the properties within the red boundaries will be affected if the undergrounding project is implemented. And the overhead service lines to those boundaries will be, will be undergrounded as well. This figure is a little bit different from the one that was attached in the staff report. We did add City Park Way in there a little bit. It's been extended and the reason why is because there are some poles within City Park Ways that needs to be removed as part of the undergrounding project as well, after talking to PG&E representative. And this shows the limits of work for the phase two project which, along Donner. So since the majority of the wooden poles are located, for Donner are located behind the properties, it'll be somewhat challenging to complete this project, but the feasibility of two underground dislocation will be discussed with PG&E once the city determines to move forward with this project. Here are the next step. First is execute the Rule 28, well, pass the resolution tonight and then execute a Rule 28 general conditions agreement with PG&E. Then we still have to continue to coordinate with PG&E, other utilities agency, and then issue our request for proposal for the design services. Then then bid the project for construction services at a later time afterwards. So this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is also a public hearing, which I've been told by the clerk, there are no speaker cards. Was there anybody from the public who did want to speak on this topic? Hearing and seeing no, if we do close the public hearing, we'll preclude from speaking until later time on this topic. Seeing nobody else, can I have action on public hearing?
To the chair, seeing no speakers, I move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made in second to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0 voice vote. Okay, back to council for questions of staff. Marty.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's a projected timeline? Are we thinking about?
That's phase two, right?
Well, well, phase one and phase two, honestly, because are we going to wait until the Recreation Aquatic Center is built and just kind of, I don't need like within a month of the accuracy, I'm just interested in the timeframe.
Yes, there are multiple coordination that needs to be done, not just with PG&E but other utility agencies as well. So we're thinking typically it takes at least about one and a half to two years for the design services and then construction thereafter. About maybe another year for, yeah.
Hi, Javon Groban, City Manager. Just want to clarify for the public in the council. The action that is before you tonight is to establish the undergrounding district. Staff will have to come back likely during our budget conversations to formally establish the project. And the project will be funded by the funds that have accumulated at PG&E. And then that will launch the full project with a full timeline from design through completion.
So just piggybacking on that question regarding timeline, so phase one, phase two, so let's say phase one really is a two, three-year process, we're looking at phase two somewhere some, some years out. So is that $7 million taken into consideration, those costs a few years down the road?
Absolutely. Let me take that. We are presenting the project as a phase one and a phase two. It is absolutely true. By the time we get ready to even construct phase one, there may be cost escalation just because even today, if we were full steam ahead, we're likely minimum two years out before the first shovel is in the ground and we all know what construction costs increase by. However, what I do want to say is that it is still in theory possible that the project is not done as a phase one and a phase two, but it is done similar to how we do some of our other projects where phase one and phase two are bid at the same time and whereas phase two is the bid ought. Should bids come in lower and we have enough money with the accumulated credits, we would do, do them at the same time. What we talked about at our prior study session is that the PG&E undergrounding credits gives the City Council the ability to essentially take a credits for five years in the future. And so we might be able to say, you know what, let's borrow from those five-year credits. And I think the math we did last time was that if we wanted to fully face, fully fund phase two based on the current calculation and we borrowed five years out, that would leave roughly a $550,000 delta. And so at that time, if we had the rest of the money out of some other city pot, we could borrow five years into the future and then come up with that gap and do both phases at the same time. Again, all of those issues will be vetted once we launch the project and come closer to construction.
Great. So, and I'll just kind of repeat the comments that I made last time is, I think it's a great selection, it's a great area, I think it's a very utilized area in San Bruno with kids, with people, I mean, you can't pick a better area that I think will be a huge impact for this project, so, thank you, Jimmy.
Michael.
Thank you. So the funds that have been committed to this by PG&E, and we talked also about borrowing on future allocations, and the question of bankruptcy came up. So I'm wondering, are those funds currently with the city or are they promised by PG&E and potentially at risk from a bankruptcy?
Those funds are currently held in trust with PG&E, they are not deposited within the city's funds. And everything we've seen from the PG&E bankruptcy, their bankruptcy appears to be a restructuring that does not appear to impact this, this fund nor some of their other programs. The PG&E bankruptcy process is a restructuring due to the financial losses triggered by the fires.
Okay. And in terms of establishing this, this district, are we then somehow committed to complete the project within any specific amount of time or is it just, just a hurdle that we have to clear?
There's no set amount of timeline, because I think the reason for passing this resolution is so that we don't lose the, the transfer to the City of Live Oak. And a lot of agencies are doing the same thing as well. City of Mellon Park is actually passing a resolution as well at the same time so that they don't lose it.
Okay. And the only other concern I would have is really how this impacts the rest of the workload of all the other engineering projects that we've taken on. After the, some of the information we got this last Saturday on how, how busy the departments all are, that, I mean, that would be another concern is how we fit it in, but I know that'll be a discussion for another day, so I'm in favor of moving forward. Thank you.
Linda? All right, there being no other comments or questions from council this time, it is a resolution before the council. Is there any action?
I move that we approve the resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now we'll move on to item seven, conduct to business.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Marty.
I just want to make sure, because we did have some public comments during the report on the San Bruno Avenue. Would it be appropriate for those comments to be, specific to that project be answered?
About PG&E's bankruptcy and about us as ratepayers and...
There was about three questions, I believe, that were pertaining to PG&E that were related to the product. It's close enough.
Well, it was about a gas line, they're going to hit another gas line. It was about their bankruptcy, which the City Manager just alluded to, but he, I think the City Manager, if we give him just a minute, we can probably summarize real quick.
Sure.
That's okay.
I think there were a number of questions. I think one, the impact of the PG&E bankruptcy, we've addressed. I think the other question was what has the city done with the funds that it received from the PG&E, from PG&E vis a vis the 2010 explosion? I can give a high-level summary of that right now. So the public may remember, in total, the city received $120 million in funds from PG&E. Those monies were essentially divided into two parts. $50 million came directly to the city for rebuilding efforts directly aligned to the Cressmore Glenview neighborhood, and that was for all the various improvements to public infrastructure, the new park. Those funds have largely been expended. We brought a report to council a few months ago detailing where we are with those expenditures. And I believe about a week and a half ago, the trustee was in reviewing the last set of invoices that would exhaust that fund. And we're retaining just a small portion in the account, I believe about $30,000 to deal with a final audit of all of the trust expenditures. And there's enough there to pay the trustees, I believe at $2,500 a month expense out. And so no city funds will be used for the trustee, they will all come from that trust. Once the final audit is done, any remaining funds will be credited back to the city to open invoices. And so that $50 million has been expensed and we, about a year ago now, celebrated the substantial completion of all those projects and we're working on punchless items now and will be done soon. The other portion of that $120 million, so the balance of $70 million went to the San Bruno, a newly established organization called the San Bruno Community Foundation, of which the City Council appoints, appoints their board members, but they are connected but a separate entity. They divided those funds into a number of different buckets for community grants annually. They give scholarships and other grants to nonprofits. However, the largest portion of that $70 million, $50 million, they have granted back to the city for the development of a new aquatic and recreation center. And we are currently in design development for that new aquatic and recreation center. And early in March, there will be a presentation to the San Bruno Foundation on where we are, then to the Planning Commission in April with the plan to be at the City Council around May. And the City Council knows that in the city mayor and City Council office, there's a stack of a little bit over 1,000 pages with all of the, I believe it's the, either, it's a 60 or 80% design documents that staff are currently doing a page turn on, going through all the fine-tooth issues related to design of the building.
That was a really good update too, because, I mean, really, that was great, I'm impressed by that, but, because people do still ask, where, where did that PG&E money go? I mean, it's, it's probably every other month that question comes up, so.
But I think.
I'm hoping all those questions that we could answer related to that are there.
I mean, I know it doesn't about the bankruptcy and I know it doesn't about the gas line specifically. But the other thing too is, on the San Bruno Avenue, yes? Please go ahead, City Attorney.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
You're not.
I just want to caution that this item is not on the agenda. And when we invite staff to comment on matters that individuals in public comment have made, we risk the discussion that's occurring now, which is a question and answer and good information, but that really needs to be provided to the residents after the, after the meeting.
Okay, we will move on. Thank you for the clarification. Conduct to business.
Item 7A, receive a report and confirm appointments to City Council members to two new ad hoc committees. Education Roundtable Committee and Open Space Parks and Recreation Facility Planning Committee related to the former Cressmore High School's suite site development.
City Manager.
Good afternoon. While the PowerPoint comes up, City Manager, for some reason, I like to stand and give some presentations, probably because I sit too much during the day. So I'm here to give the City Council a brief presentation and then let you talk about your appointment to various boards and commissions, various committees, I'm sorry. So as the City Council will recall, you had your annual committee appointment process and we would like to introduce now the recommendation in working with the mayor, there are two new ad hoc committees that are recommended to be added and then the appointment of members to an additional committee. So why don't I begin by talking about them? So we're here tonight to talk about and confirm appointments to two new ad hoc committees. The first is a Education Roundtable Committee and the second is a Open Space Parks and Recreation Facility Planning Committee related to the former Cressmore High Site redevelopment. And then the third one is an existing, actually a, a existing committee for a newly established organization called the Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment Policy Advisory Committee. Long title, so why don't we sort of jump into what there are. Our agenda, we're going to talk about the ad hoc committees, we'll talk about the committee assignments, you'll have your discussion and any questions we are here to answer. So the first new ad hoc committee, and this came up after a number of discussions between staff and representatives at the San Bruno Park School District, really around how do we get more discussions and collaboration between the city and the various educational agencies within the city? And so the idea came up of forming an educational roundtable that's really made up of two members of the City Council, but that would have meetings that would have two members represented from three additional organizations. One is the San Bruno Community Park School, San Bruno Park School District, the Samatay Union High School District and Skyline College. The goal is just to facilitate communication and collaboration, the thought is potentially quarterly meetings of those groups. With the concept that we would use this 2020 year as a test pilot for the ad hoc committee and then at the bound, at the end of the year, we would reevaluate it to determine whether it stays as an, as an ad hoc committee or becomes a standing committee. And so the way our committee processes work, the mayor makes a recommendation and that is confirmed by the, by the full City Council. The next new ad hoc committee is a Open Space Parks and Recreation Facility Planning Committee related to the former Cressmore High Site redevelopment. And so as many people in the city know, we had a high school that was open for 18 years. So Cressmore High opened in 1962 but closed in 1980. It is currently used by various organizations, including a continuation school, Peninsula High. The Samatay Union High School District has had a number of board meetings and community conversations around leveraging that property for other uses in the district. And the use that has really, they, as an organization, they have gravitated to is looking at potentially selling the property and using the proceeds to build workforce, i.e. teacher housing within the county. And so lots of discussions have happened with that. One of the components of that redevelopment is the soccer fields and the sports fields that are there now and highly utilize. Our general plan zones that property as R1, so low-density typically seniors, single-family or, or townhome residential. And the general plan currently says that in a redevelopment, the sports field, the sports fields will stay in place. How that happens, how they are utilized is still very much a subject of great community interest, but also because the City Council currently maintains those fields, it is a matter where the city needs to be involved in. And so a ad hoc committee between two representatives of the City Council and two representatives of the Samatay Union High School District was conceived of as a way to really formally begin those conversations between the two agencies so we can really nail down what will be the open space, the parks and recreation facilities at any redevelopment of that site. And so the concept is that ad hoc committee would be established, they would meet and report back to their respective bodies. So your two City Council members would meet with the, with two representatives of the Samatay Union High School District and then report back to you and their members would report back to them. And so we're looking to see if council wants to formally establish that committee and appoint two members of the body to that. The next one is appointments to fill an existing vacancy on the Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment Policy Advisory Committee. Long, long title, but the county has really undertaken an effort that is really a collaboration between 21 agencies, so all cities plus the county of Samatay, really to establish a new agency called the Sea Level Rise Vulnerability and a couple more titles. a new agency called the Sea Level Rise Vulnerability, and a couple more titles after that that I can't recall at the moment. But the goal is to have a single agency in the county that receives funding from not only initial seed money, from all of the various agencies, and the council and the public may remember, we allocated $40,000 in the current fiscal year budget to help with the establishment of this agency, and that was a three-year commitment, so $40,000 this year and $40,000 for two subsequent fiscal years. And part of the agency, or part of the charge of this policy advisory committee would be to look at what it would be a sustainable, permanent funding source for the agency, as well as the county is leading an effort to receive special legislation at the state to formally establish this agency. I think most of the partnering agencies have agreed that overall, it's a good thing, it will not only look at sea level rise, it would look at stormwater and maybe regional stormwater treatment plants that would help, or regional stormwater treatment plants and/or projects that will help out with all of our stormwater requirements. And so they are asking for a representative from the city of San Bruno, city council to represent the city on that agency. And so those are the three bodies here to answer any questions, or really turn it over to you for your discussions.
On the last one, on the Sea Level Rise, is there any knowledge as to how often it meets, when it meets?
It was on the documents presented at the last meeting. I can look at that and get you that information in just a moment.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
On that same question, same position, is that one where they are asking specifically for an elected representative, or is that one where staff could represent?
They're asking for an elected representative.
Okay. And if no other questions, let me go back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Marty.
I had a question about the Education Roundtable Committee. Is the intent of that committee to meet all at the same time with the Skyline, San Mateo, San Bruno, Park School District? Is that how it's?
Yeah, the intent really is cross-collaboration, cross-communication between all four agencies. And now, I should point out a nuance. We are calling it the city council's ad hoc committee, and you cannot establish an ad hoc committee that has members outside of the city council. So it will be the city's ad hoc committee, and you will invite representatives from all of those boards. It won't be an ad hoc committee made up of each of those bodies.
I definitely like the concept. It just seems like it's kind of a stretch for Skyline to be there at the same meeting where, when you're talking about San Bruno Park School District, but I'm not, I mean, it's fine. It just seems kind of, that's a big disconnect in my head currently, that how Skyline and San Bruno Park School District and council reps would be there, but it's fine.
If I can, I mean, there may be synergies that are talked about. One of the things is that it just might be good for the agencies to really come together in a more structured way to know what's going on. One of the initiatives that the San Bruno Park School District started last year was Portrait of a Graduate, and they brought in partners from the city, from Skyline. Regina Stanbacher Stroud, the former president of Skyline, was a part of that, and really using that community college-level knowledge to say, really, you know, what is the Portrait of a Graduate from our elementary and middle schools, and how should they be preparing kids to be successful in high school and beyond? And so it's just those synergistic approaches, and you sometimes never know what will come of it.
I just have a comment. I just have a comment. So as many of you know, this was an item that I campaigned on. I really believe that successful cities and inviting communities have a lot of cohesion and collaboration between their schools and their city. We have traditionally not, from what I have seen, especially given that a lot of the schools right now, including Skyline, are really land-use boards in some ways, in the sense that they're making decisions on land, large portions of land that will impact the entire city for decades to come. And so I just want to thank Javon, because you, I think you listened to the council, and you came to us, you worked with the district, you worked with Skyline to get this committee to actually get moving, and I think it's a long time coming. I welcome it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to say a little bit that that was one of my concepts, and one of the things that really enlightened it was on December 18th, being at the winter concert. And you watch how at the Parkside Concert, and you have the Cappuccino music director there, and how that program, which at CAP, back when I was there, was flourishing as far as their band program, and Parkside, and it kind of had gone down a little bit, but by the collaboration, it really has flourished. Parkside is just, it's impressive. Cappuccino is doing great, and I think those type of things. It's also with the college as well. You know, they want to be more engaged, and they have, and I've started to attend some of those things, and they're just saying, you know, let us try to then see where we can reach out and utilize their resources, whether it's San Mateo Avenue or within the schools. It's also about Skyline College, as Lynda correctly mentioned, you know, their development, Ingval with the San Bruno School, Cressmore High. So it's also good, I think, to get everybody together, and I think we sometimes underestimate what one can help the other with, and I think when we all sit in the room together, I think it adds value, rather than trying to do it separately, but I appreciate your comments. Okay, so going back to Sea Level Rise, is there?
So their website says that they meet as needed, and I have not yet found an agenda that's happened already. They were just adopted in late 2018, and so I'm not even sure that they have met yet. They're working out their schedule.
Sometimes that usually means quarterly or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they likely poll the members that are a part of it, and really find to date that everybody can make it, or at least the vast majority.
Okay. All right, so what I would like to offer here as far as the Sea Level Rise, that's kind of open to anybody here. I have my recommendations for the ad hoc committees for what we are labeling the Educational Roundtable Committee. That is something that everybody here, which I am thankful for, had interest in one way or another. So at this time, I'd like to appoint the vice mayor. Since the vice mayor rotates, that means everybody would have that opportunity, if that's something that would wish to continue after it's reevaluated. On the ad hoc committee for Cressmore High facility, again, it's not about the sale, because we don't control that, but it's about the fields, the usage, and the recreational as listed. I'd like to ask myself, as well as Linda Mason, to do that, and I know she's willing to, so thank you. And then we're back to the Sea Level Rise. Anybody interested? If not, why don't we do this?
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Marty.
Is there two people on the, the school? Or is it, is it just one?
Yeah.
No, it's myself and the mayor and vice mayor. Okay. The mayor and the vice mayor. Myself and Michael.
Okay. Well, I'll just say I'm really interested in the school one.
Everybody was, which I was impressed. I don't know if it was the different element of it, but yes, I got interest from everybody.
So the appointment is mayor, vice mayor for the Education Roundtable Committee.
Thank you, Marty.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And then it's mayor Medina and council member Mason for the Open Space Parks and Rec.
At Cressmore High.
Cressmore.
Yes.
And then we're waiting on Sea Level.
Okay.
I would just say, it's not that I'm not interested, it's I don't think I have the time.
And that's important, too, like you've always said. Why don't we do this? We're going to get specific on how often it meets, what time, where it meets, i.e., does it go into various cities? Is it just right there at San Mateo Library? I remember attending that once there. I did attend the first one they had, so, but I believe, Lynda, that was during the business day, if I'm not mistaken, but that, they may have changed. So what I'm going to do is, once the clerk, we get more specifics, we're going to email it out to council. I'd really like you to check your calendars, because I think it is important to represent our residents. Not only do we have an economic interest, but there are also people that are affected. So is, yeah, go ahead.
To the chair.
Yes.
I'm just going to say this, I think it's, you know, there's already an existing subcommittee that exists, which is the RAC, which I know you're also on. So I'm just going to encourage you maybe to step back from the Cressmore High and let another council member who might be interested to give another perspective on that, because there is a lot of also updates on the RAC on the Cressmore High as well. And it seems like maybe if you have the time, maybe that's something that maybe you can get on, is the Sea Level Rise?
I'm going to keep my recommendations as where they are. On the Sea Level Rise, I'm going to ask the clerk, we get the detail, let's send it out, and if additional changes need to be made, they can be. Any other comments from council?
I would recommend that there be a motion for these appointments.
To the chair.
Yes, Marty.
I think you're loaded with a lot of work, Mr. Mayor, and I think it should be spread out a little bit, with all due respect.
And I appreciate that. I actually have less that I'm on primary than I was before, and less alternates than I was before.
To the chair. So are, do we need one motion for all of the appointments, or do we need to take them individually?
I would recommend that we take them individually, so I would recommend a motion for, a motion and a second for the Education Roundtable, a motion and a second for the Open Space Parks and Rec appointments, too, just to clarify that we have agreement on both.
In that case, to the chair, I'll move that we approve the mayor's recommendations for the Roundtable Committee?
Educational Roundtable.
Educational Roundtable.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Motion made, and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, move on to, well, we don't have to worry about Sea Level Rise, and now we'll move on to.
And if I may, just to clarify for the record, that's to appoint the mayor and the vice mayor to serve on that committee.
Correct.
Yes.
And then a motion and second on the next one is fine.
Okay. So I will move then that we approve the mayor's recommendation that he and council member Mason serve on the Open Space Park and Recreation Facility Planning Committee.
That's more important than it is.
I second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, all those opposed?
No.
No.
Lynda, did you vote?
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay.
Motion carries three to two.
Okay. Thank you. I just didn't hear.
No, you can, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Javon, but that still leaves us with some homework, and that's the Sea Level Rise.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For the last couple of years, you and I served on the Ad hoc Committee for Project Pride. Is that dissolved now? And if it's not, then I recommend that it is.
That it be dissolved.
That it be dissolved.
That it be. That we dissolve it?
Yeah.
To the chair, can that?
Or, you're right.
I'm sorry to clarify what, which.
You know what? I think it's an ad hoc committee. I think Marty and I have similar views, so that's not on the agenda. We get it. It's an ad hoc committee, it's not a standing committee, and so, well, I'll ask both of you.
I'm going to look to the attorney, but my understanding of ad hoc committees, if they are not reestablished each year, they die, they have a life of one year. But we will confirm that.
Exactly.
I'm afraid I don't quite understand what the proposed action for either discussion or action is, and I think what's on the agenda right now is the action that you just took. So I would recommend that if somebody would like to discuss a different ad hoc committee, that we can bring that back at the next meeting along with the Sea Level Rise Committee.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
My only other suggestion, and for another meeting, would be to have alternates for these other outside appointments. For Peninsula Clean Energy, which I served on for the last four years, we've always had an alternate, and it just makes sure that we have representation, because sometimes there are emergencies where you can't make a meeting, and it seems that sometimes we have an alternate, sometimes we don't. It seems like it'd be nice to always make sure someone's available there.
Yeah, agreed. And when we did meet, not everybody was joining up for alternates, so I'm going to try to plug it in a little bit, but also something I didn't know is Bosqua, for example, is not allowed, my understanding is, an alternate. For whatever their bylaws are, but yes. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item B.
Item 7B, receive mid-year financial update report for fiscal year 2019-2020 as of December 31, 2019, and adopt the resolution approving the budget balancing strategies and second quarter budget amendment for the fiscal year 2019-20 operating and capital budget.
So, good afternoon.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah. Good evening, mayor and city council, again, Javon Grogan, City Manager. We are here to provide the city council with a mid-year financial update and projection and budget balancing strategies. You will see from our mid-year projection, there is a projected shortfall. Let me first say I'm here with our finance director, Keith DiMartini, who will be giving the bulk of the presentation tonight, supplemented by me. And so our objective is for you to receive a, the mid-year update report. There's no specific action on that. However, there is action requested on amending a resolution for the current FY 1920 operating in capital budget and to approve budget balancing strategies. So as the council and the public may be aware, we, as a city, operate a July 1 to June 30 fiscal year. We do our annual budget development process, really beginning, staff starts typically in the month of January, but that process includes staff work, council study sessions, a budget study session, various public meetings, upwards of five public meetings that culminates typically with a adopted budget in June, and then every quarter, every three months, the city provides, staff provides the city council with an update. And so our update this year has a number of items, really specifically related to the general fund, where we are projecting a shortfall. We will go through those individually and in significant detail. What I will say is, we had a lot of discussions at the budget time, and the prior gap was, in the prior fiscal year, was 1.5 million. We worked really hard to get that to as close to zero as possible. We came to about $300,000, and most, nearly all of that was for one-time expenditures, for one-time, using one-time money for one-time expenditures. We have no information that has revealed itself during this budget year that we want to process through and give you in the community full transparency on where we are. As the city council knows, we adopted a, or we launched a comprehensive fiscal sustainability project to address the city's financial challenges. We are approximately just over one year into that process, and it's a 24-month process, and it's a living and breathing process. And with this shortfall, we have adjusted our projections, and we have some strategies that we want to talk to you about. So we really have four basic items for our agenda, and those are on the screen. An overview of the general fund budget, specific detail on the mid-year. We will talk about enterprise funds and our internal service funds. Quick high-level enterprise funds are for our funds that act more as lines of business, sewer where there are ratepayers, water where there are ratepayers, our cable franchise where there are ratepayers. And then we will talk about our internal service funds, which are service, which are funds for, like our central garage and other central, typically admin services and facility services that we use in-house that are funded by not only the general fund, but our enterprise funds. We'll talk about the amendments, and then we will have council discussion in direction. So now I'll turn it over to our finance director, Keith DiMartini, to begin with a little background.
Okay. Thank you very much, Javon. Good evening, honorable members of the city council. I will go through the details of this mid-year financial report. Let me first start with some context, some slides that sort of put some context behind our city's annual operating budget and our capital budget as it relates to other economic indicators and some comparisons with other cities in San Mateo County. This graph here shows the city of San Bruno's population data as far back as 1990, and the budgeted full-time equivalent position information for the city staff as far back as 1999. Since '99, the city's population has grown by just over 7%, while the city's position count has only grown by about 2%. And this results in fewer city staff to serve the growing city population. City staffing levels have not been able to reach the highest level as it was back in 2004, so our staffing levels have roughly been equivalent to where we were about 16 2004, so our staffing levels have roughly been equivalent to where we were about 16 years ago. Back in 2005 and since then, there have been some periods of declining staffing levels, as you can see in this graph, which were primarily due to some similar budget challenges that we're facing this current fiscal year. And there were some actions taken, such as hiring freezes or furloughs in prior years as well, as you can see by the declining black line on this graph. This slide also shows a pattern that many municipalities experience, where there is a delay in city resources, in city resource increases, when the population increases. This is a common trend of how the timing of how city funding increases actually work, and it's often delayed by economic trends such as housing increases, development, and population growth. So this next slide here shows a comparison of San Bruno with six other cities in San Mateo County for their current fiscal year general fund budget, and comparing the city, the total city population, or a per capita comparison. The bars break down the major revenue sources in each city. You'll see property tax in the orange color, sales tax in the red color, and so on and so forth. The shaded brown area behind the part, behind the bars, show the general fund per capita comparison. San Bruno does have the fifth largest population of all cities of San Mateo County, at just over 45,000 people living here. Daly City, San Francisco, San Mateo, and Redwood City all have a higher population. But as you can see, our city's general fund is significantly lower than those cities, as well as some other cities with a lower population. San Bruno's revenues are lower than all other cities, except for Millbrae, but more significantly and important to note here is that San Bruno's funding per capita is also lower than most cities as well. Only Daly City's per capita is lower, but their population is nearly triple that of San Bruno. Again, this provides some context into San Bruno's financial resources being rather limited and not nearly as robust as some of these other cities that we often might compare ourselves to within the community. So let me just start with an overview of the current fiscal year adopted budget. It shows our revenues and expenditures in the general fund only. The City Council adopted a balanced budget with the use of just over $300,000 of fund balance to fund very few one-time items. Again, that's a very common practice to use fund balance for one-time items. And this is much less than the deficit that was, that the council was grappling with in the fiscal year 18-19 budget. So a significant amount of progress had been made in the current fiscal year budget, as the City Manager alluded to earlier. It's important to note that the current fiscal year budget does meet all of the requirements in the city's reserve policy, which include at least a $1.5 million fund balance in the general fund, a balance in our general fund reserve of approximately 25% of annual operating expenditures, and also $3 million set aside in a reserve in case of an emergency. All of those reserve requirements were met in our adopted fiscal year 19-20 budget, which is important to note. The revenue pie chart on the left shows the proportional share of the major revenue sources in our general fund, with property taxes and sales taxes being the most significant of all other sources. The expenditure pie chart on the right shows the major city functions that the general fund goes to fund. As you can see, a majority of the resources go to fund the public safety functions in the city. So now I'd like to go into quite some detail in regards to the current fiscal year projection for our general fund revenues. In summaries, in summary, our revenues through the mid-year are at approximately 42% of the total budget, which is a few percentage points lower from the mid-year at last fiscal year. This year's staff implemented additional methods for calculating a year-end financial projection beyond just reviewing this rather simplistic run rate calculation. In conducting that analysis, staff projected that a revenue shortfall is very much likely, which is why we are before you this evening to propose the actions and strategies to address that shortfall. Overall property taxes, at this time, staff is anticipating that property tax will come in at budget, at our budget level. Sales tax revenue has historically been a rather volatile revenue source for the city, and it fluctuates based on economic activity and seasonality of purchasing that may occur in the economy. Sales tax revenue through the end of September did show a modest increase compared to the prior year. Sales activity in the San Bruno Town Center, downtown San Mateo Avenue, the Bay Hill shopping area, and the transit corridors area did show some rather strong sales tax activity and some growth. However, sales tax activity in Tan Fran unfortunately has been declining. Oh, go back a little bit. Our transient occupancy tax is another strong revenue source for the, for the city. As council is aware, we did bring on the services of an outside auditing firm to help us audit the TOT revenue for the hotels, and we will likely see a one-time small revenue increase in the current fiscal year as that audit concludes, and then ongoing revenue going forward. The motor vehicle license fee revenue, this is a funding source that is funded annually from a countywide education revenue augmentation fund from property tax revenues of non-basic school districts. Staff is anticipating approximately $1 million of a reduction of this revenue source in this current fiscal year, which I will go into detail on the next slide. Business taxes is another large revenue source for the city. The city also brought on the services of a consulting auditing firm to help us audit this, this revenue source, to ensure that businesses that are doing business in the city of San Bruno, in fact, have a business license. HDL has been successful in bringing in dozens of businesses into compliance to ensure they have a license and that we receive that business license tax revenue this current fiscal year and going forward. However, there are other considerations and other factors going on, and we are projected to see a decline in business license tax this current fiscal year. And then the other major source I want to note is our departmental revenues. So for the Police Department and the Planning Department, they are likely to experience some increased revenue this year, this fiscal year, primarily attributable to the increase in cardroom activity, parking fines, and planning cost reimbursements for some work on development projects. However, despite those increases, the Building Division unfortunately is projected to come in significantly below their revenue budget in this current fiscal year due to the delay of some of the very large development projects in the pipeline currently. So the revenue shortfall is a summary on this slide right here. Staff is projecting approximately a $4.2 million revenue shortfall in the current fiscal year, and that's made up of about $300,000 in sales tax, $1.1 million in motor vehicle license fee revenue, about $700,000 in business license tax, approximately $2 million in building permit revenue, and a few other fluctuations equalling that $4.2 million. So I'd like to step through each one of these revenue shortfall items in detail so that council is aware of the work that staff has done to come up with these projections before we move on to...
Sure. I just want to point out for the City Council, item one and item three. Sales tax, while the city is prevented from revealing individual sales tax and business tax payments from individual businesses, it is important to note, when we look at why we are projected to be down in sales tax for the rest of this year, we did have a major department store Sears close. And so the, the line item there is not exclusively related to Sears, but it is in part reflected of a partial closing for Sears that we, I believe, closed on February 3rd. With regard to business tax payments, the council did authorize the city to undertake a lawsuit against Sky Park that did not pay the city an 8% airport parking use tax for the last 12 months. That business has since went bankrupt. And so the line item there is not exclusively related to Sky Park, but it is reflective of not receiving those tax payments from Sky Park, and the city attorney's office is in the process of filing suit. I believe that lawsuit has been filed, and we are in the process of potentially trying to collect the monies that are due to the city. But it is important to note that those two businesses, while they are also affecting our mid-year numbers, will absolutely affect our next year budget numbers, and likely our budget numbers for several years to come, until those properties are repositioned on the market and redeveloped.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll walk through each one of these revenue shortfalls in detail. The City Manager already spoke to much of what's going on in our sales tax revenue projection. Staff routinely budget this revenue source conservatively, given the volatility of potential business changes that may occur, as we alluded to earlier. And with the announcement of the closure of the Sears business in the Tan Fran Mall back in February 2020, that is a rather large contributing factor to the revenue shortfall projection that staff has, has calculated. So the next revenue shortfall is the motor vehicle license fee. This is budgeted at about $5.2 million of general fund revenue in the current fiscal year. The state of California has passed laws that require a minimum funding level for all school districts, for all school districts throughout the state of California called the Local Control Funding Formula. The primary funding source for school districts is property tax revenue. For school districts where the property tax generated in that district is below the minimum funding level required by the state, the state will fund the difference so that the minimum is met in those districts. Those districts are classified as non-basic aid school districts. When the property tax is adequate, or more than adequate, to meet the minimum funding requirement, those districts are reclassified from non-basic aid to basic aid school districts. And those districts keep all of the property tax revenue generated in that district. The result of this is that there is less property tax revenue that goes back to the state, that then the state can redistribute back down to counties and cities in the form of this motor vehicle license fee revenue. So effectively, when school districts flip to being a basic aid district, the pot of money that states can reallocate is reduced. In this current fiscal year, there were two school districts that were reclassified from non-basic aid to basic aid, and that, the county notified all the cities in San Mateo County of that change just a few months ago in December, well into this current fiscal year's budget. When these districts changed, it resulted in less revenue. The county is currently actively working with the legislative advocates at the state level to request that the shortfall be appropriated by the state in the upcoming budget cycle in fiscal year 2021. At this time, I have no update if, if that appropriation request will be made, so we will find out through the state process. In this current fiscal year, the total VLF amount due to the entire county of San Mateo was about $208 million, and San Bruno's reduction is about $1 million. And it's important to note that every single city in San Mateo County is experiencing a reduction of their VLF fee revenue in the current fiscal year. Every single city is. Business license tax, this is budgeted at $2.6 million in the current fiscal year. As mentioned earlier, we brought on the audit services that are helping to increase some of our revenue in this area, as well as staff conducting some additional compliance review work to ensure that all the businesses are, continue to be in compliance with the business license ordinance. The most significant revenue impact is projected to come from Sky Park, the City Manager alluded to earlier. They're subject to an 8% gross receipts tax called the airport parking facility tax. With the closure of that business, we will no longer see that revenue in this current fiscal year and going forward. And so the combination of some of the compliance and audit activities, as well as the closure of Sky Park, is resulting in a projected reduction of business license tax of about And finally, the other major revenue shortfall is coming from building permit review. This line item in the operating budget is about $3.7 million in the current fiscal year. The budget includes a projection of anticipated building permit revenue from development activity that occurs throughout the city in any given year. This projection includes routine permit activity on smaller types of projects for businesses or homeowners, but it also includes the permit activity expected from rather large development projects. And it's proven to be a really vital source of revenue to fund the building and planning operations in prior years. Most of the larger development projects have experienced delays with their projects progressing for various reasons, which has resulted in delaying the permit fee revenue for the city, that they would actually file their application and the city would recognize the permit fee revenue. This slide lists five, the five major development projects that are the cause of the delay in the permit fee revenue, including YouTube, the city's recreation and aquatic center, 271 El Camino Real, which is a 24-unit development project, 111 San Bruno Avenue, a mixed-use development project, and 160 El Camino Real, which is a hotel project. The delays can be largely attributable to limited staff capacity to actually review the applications in a timely manner. There's much more extensive environmental or historic and utility studies and reviews that are required to see all of these projects through the entitlement phases. Also, as the Community Economic Development Director has talked about multiple occasions, the city's zoning code has not been updated in multiple years, and it's not consistent with the city's general plan and the transit corridors plan, which again, results in additional review that might be required, or additional time for the review. And then finally, there may be changes that come directly from the developer or the project sponsor themselves, which may cause some, cause a variety of different delays. Overall, the building permit revenue is expected to be reduced by about $2 million, so a $2 million revenue shortfall just in building permit revenue. So now shifting gears to talk about the mid-year projection for expenditures. This slide provides an overview of the expenditures through the mid-year. In summary, the Q2 expenditure run rate is at 51%, which is exactly the same percent that we saw at the same point last fiscal year. The first half of the fiscal year expenditures are typically a little bit higher, when you, because the city has chosen to take advantage of the upfront prepayment option for our Cal PERS unfunded actuarial liability, which in the current fiscal year, it's a once-a-year $6 million payment that we choose to make upfront. Instead of making installment payments over the course of the year, we end up paying a little less money to PERS because of taking advantage of that option, so it just kind of throws off the run rate calculation a bit. Again, it's perfectly normal that we would see these percentages as they are here. Staff has also included the costs of recently negotiated bargaining unit, labor negotiation contracts in the upcoming, in this projection as well. It's important to note here that on average, the city's expenditure budget in the general fund has only gone up approximately 5% each year over the past five years. That is a very modest expenditure growth, especially when you consider the cost of living adjustments, or any CPI indexing assumptions, or quite simply, our PERS contribution rates that we have to pay to PERS are far above that oftentimes. So our, our expenditure growth is very, very modest compared to other factors. So given the $4.2 million revenue shortfall that staff are projecting in this current fiscal year, staff has developed a list of budget balancing strategies in order to delay or reduce expenditures and utilize alternative funding sources in order to balance the general fund budget. This slide lists, excuse me, this slide lists those strategies, and I'll walk through them in detail as well. But before doing so, I just want the council to be aware that staff evaluated many additional budget balancing strategies and are recommending this list before you this evening in order to minimize any service level impacts to the public. For example, staff are not recommending any staffing adjustments to the police or the fire departments that may impact, impact public safety or other priority projects. The budget balancing strategies also do not include any layoffs or any furloughs. All targets and requirements that are articulated in the city's reserve policy are still projected to be met with the, with the actual adoption of these budget balancing strategies. Staff will continue to very closely monitor the revenues and the expenditures in the departments throughout the rest of the year, and then staff are planning to come back to the City Council at the conclusion of the quarter three. That'll be in sometime in late April with an update. And any changes to the expected revenue shortfall, we can talk about, and then reevaluate any of these budget balancing strategies at that time. So let me walk through each one of these strategies in a little bit more detail. The first one and the most substantial one includes the delaying of a number of capital projects that are included in the city's CIP budget into fiscal year 2020 or at a later time. And the action that council would take would be to deappropriate these projects and then transfer the available funds from the general fund capital reserve fund into the general fund so that we can balance the operating budget. Staff would propose to replenish these projects at a later time through the budget process, working with council. So walking through each one of these, the, staff is proposing to delay the agenda preparation and document management solution and and document management solution and just leverage the existing solution that the city clerk's office currently has, reduce the city facility security improvement project, and just focus on the security cameras piece of that project and other technology in City Hall, and utilize the asset forfeiture funding to pay for that project. We are proposing to delay the Commodore Dog Park improvements project, delay the Fire Station 52 replacement project, and again, focus on just the immediate bathroom upgrades and ADA improvements that are required in that facility. Delay the library generator and HVAC replacement projects as the temperature control issues at the library have stabilized with some fixes that staff were able to implement on those pieces of equipment. And then delay the larger equipment upgrade to a later time. Delay the Parks Corporation Yard Facility Improvements Project in order to revisit the scope of that project so it meets staffing needs in the future. Staff are proposing to delay various equipment and maintenance projects of the police station, including the HVAC, the roof, the gate, and the fence project, and consider revising the scope. It's important to note that the roof at the police station had had some leaks in recent storms, but those leaked repairs have held up and the building is no longer leaking. And that way, we can delay the larger capital investment for a roof replacement to a later time. Also, staff is investigating the ability to repair the HVAC instead of replacing it, which would result in some cost savings in the current fiscal year. We're also proposing to delay the bicycle rack installation program, the streetlight pole replacement program, the traffic signal rehabilitation program, the trash capture device project. It's important to note that the recently completed public parking lot rehabilitation project near San Mateo Avenue was completed under budget. And so the savings that were originally appropriated in that project can be used to help with the budget shortfall. That's about $72,000 that we can use there. And then finally, staff are proposing to utilize about $340,000 of unappropriated fund balance in the general fund capital reserve that can be used for general fund operations. And that would leave approximately $5 million in the general fund reserve, which is the reserve target in our reserve policy.
And Keith, before we leave the slide, I just want to take the opportunity to say to the council, it truly pains me as the city manager, and I know our department head team to proffer these capital projects reductions to you. The sad story is the quality of our buildings needs significant upgrades. And to defund capital projects before they have truly launched is something that none of us want to do. We do have a fiscal reality that we need to grapple with. And I do want to point out a couple of these projects. One being Fire Station 52. That project will have approximately $250,000 remaining budget in it when we pull the $650,000 out of it. And as the finance director mentioned, we will continue to press forward with the immediate improvements of looking to add on another bathroom. I want to also point out that the reduction of that $650,000, while in many ways it's defunding a significant portion of the funded budget for that project, replacing that entire station is estimated to be an $8 to $10 million figure. And so by removing $650,000, yes, we will have to refill that pot at some point. But to actually replace that building, our largest fiscal challenge is coming up with the other $7 to $9 million. And so that is still a hurdle that is before us. But we were able to fund a little bit over $1 million in that project as sort of putting money aside, and so that we'll be pulling money out of that project. The library generator, removing that $30,000, council may remember that when the library generator needed to be replaced, the city was able to do some analysis and realize that the existing generator to City Hall had extra capacity. And so we patched in the library to the existing City Hall generator. And the weekly test of that has been successful. In our tests, when we've lost power, the library has powered up and the City Hall generator has been able to power City Hall and the library. And so we do feel comfortable in that. A number of the other police department projects, in particular, pointing out the HVAC and the roof system. Our staff know all too well of the water intrusion issues at the police department and the HVAC issues there. It is very likely that we may defund this project, but be back to the city council with a request to pull money from one of our building or reserve funds to replace that building. That is a critical infrastructure building for us. We are going to investigate replacing some of the coils on the HVAC instead of the entire unit for approximately $30,000 to $50,000. But the honest answer is that is a Band-Aid approach. And so we're dealing with a significant fiscal reality, and as we'll talk about in a little bit. But we have to grow ourselves out of this problem, and that's economic development.
Okay, so the next budget balancing strategy includes the delaying of filling currently vacant positions. There are two positions in the police department, a police sergeant and a police officer position that are currently vacant. And staff evaluated the potential service level impacts from delaying the hiring of these positions and have determined that there will be no impacts by continuing to delay the hiring of the police officer positions as the hiring process may have taken the full fiscal year, given the extensive time-consuming background process involved with hiring these two positions. That will result in a savings of approximately $80,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year. The next budget balancing strategy is to reduce operating expenses across multiple city departments. The first item before council this evening is to delay the purchase of a vehicle in the Parks Department and reevaluate that purchase at a later time. Staff are able to utilize existing vehicles in the Parks Department and just make do without the purchase of it. This strategy also includes reducing various training in various city departments, reducing some contractual services and professional services in the finance department and a few other departments, the reduction of fuel expenses, communication expenses, various tools and equipment, reducing the streetlight and traffic signal projects and the associated project expenses with that as well. Staff has also evaluated the potential service level impacts of these non-salary expenditure reductions by implementing these strategies. And although there may be some minor customer service impacts at the front counter at City Hall from one of the expense reductions, largely, the service impacts are very minimal. And staff can adjust accordingly to make do so that those impacts continue to be minimal. The next strategy is about the reduction of the equipment reserve allocation. So in the current fiscal year adopted budget, it includes an overall allocation from the general fund funded departments of about $340,000 into the general equipment reserve fund. And that fund goes to support the equipment and vehicle purchases that occur in multiple years to come. The current adopted budget projects the ending balance in that fund to be approximately $3.7 million. This strategy will reduce the funds that are made available for future vehicle and equipment purchases. Staff with council's direction can consider reinstating that allocation into that fund during the upcoming fiscal year 2021 budget cycle, along with any other adjustments that we may need to consider. The next strategy is in regards to the general fund unappropriated fund balance. In the current fiscal year, the projected fund balance in the general fund was to be approximately $2.1 million. During this current fiscal year, the city council has already taken a few actions to appropriate that fund balance, which reduces the total of unappropriated balance down from $2.1 million to $1.8 million. The city's reserve policy sets the target ending fund balance in the general fund at $1.5 million. So this budget balancing strategy is in regards to utilizing the $300,000 above and beyond the $1.5 million minimum requirement to use that to be transferred into the, to keep that in the general fund to use as a budget balancing strategy. And then finally, the utilization of Measure G funds. On April 1st, 2020, the new district sales tax measure, Measure G, will take effect with a sales tax rate increase from 9.25% to 9.75% in the city. The San Bruno Street Repair and Local City Services Measure is able to fund city services and facilities such as neighborhood police patrols, fire prevention services, urban wildfire protection, crime suppression and investigation, pothole and street repair, increasing parking supply, upgrading parks and other city services and facilities, and expanding services to local businesses. It is anticipated that for the last three months of the current fiscal year, that anywhere between $750,000 and $1 million of sales tax revenue, additional sales tax revenue will be generated from the implementation of Measure G. So staff are proposing to utilize $500,000 of the projected district tax that is expected to come in in the current fiscal year to fund neighborhood police patrol services that were originally proposed to be funded through the general fund in the current fiscal year. So moving on to the enterprise funds, here's a summary of the current fiscal year projection for the four enterprise funds. For water and wastewater, revenues for the mid-year are coming in as expected. It does include six months of the new service charges for the five-year rate plan that the city council did approve back in 2017. For the cable enterprise, the City Net Services Enterprise, that enterprise's budget was reduced pretty substantially in the current fiscal year by about $1 million, based on recent years' actuals and activity. And the budget does have the cable enterprise at a balanced budget for the first time in a long time. Staff are in the process of conducting a very thorough review of the enterprise's revenues and expenditures to date so that we can develop a very robust projection for where the enterprise will end up at the end of the fiscal year. And so we will come back to the council very shortly at a later time with an update on the cable enterprise. And then finally, the stormwater enterprise, the fees collected through the property tax rule are coming in as expected. So no major changes or issues with the enterprises at this time. This slide shows a summary of the revenues and expenditures for the cities for internal service funds. These funds, as the city manager mentioned earlier, operate more like a typical business and they exclusively support the other city departments. And they receive their revenue as a charge for service to the departments that they support. There really is no, the percentages that we see are normal right now. And you'll see that the self-insurance fund has higher expenditures through Q1 and Q2. And that's primarily due to upfront insurance premiums that are made at the very beginning of the fiscal year. The resolution before you does request two budget amendments. The first one is in regards to a grant that is coming from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and it was awarded to the city for $160,000 so that the city can work on the zoning code update related to housing development. Staff will utilize that grant to update the city's regulations so that we can be consistent with recently adopted state housing laws and the city's general plan, the housing element, and the transit corridor plan that I spoke about earlier. Also, for medical supplies, the city received about $178,000 donation from a resident back in 2015 to be used for medical supply purchases. About $122,000 remain from that gift that was received back in 2015. The fire department staff is requesting to use just over $103,000 of the remaining funds to be used to purchase three heart monitors so that adequate lifesaving equipment can be accessible on all department apparatus. About $18,500 to purchase a chest compression system to improve the delivery of CPR. About $4,000 to purchase six rapid response kits to be used for first responders in case of an active shooter scenario. About $5,000 to purchase 475 bicycle helmets to continue a very popular bicycle helmet safety program of the fire department. And then $3,600 to purchase four stop-and-bleed wall mount kits that can be used to provide initial trauma care and bleeding control to victims before EMS arrives. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the city manager.
So, council and the public, as we close out this mid-year update with the budget balancing strategies, I just want to return us really quick to our comprehensive fiscal sustainability project that we're really in the middle of and remind the public and the council that the goal of the project is really underpinned by three things. One is understanding our fiscal challenge. Two is articulating it, and then three is developing and implementing strategies. And so this graph will look really familiar. So back in November of 2018, we launched the fiscal sustainability project with a kickoff meeting in our budget process. We had a number of expenditure controls that we put into the budget. And again, that was bringing the prior year structural deficit down from 1.5 million to what the city council adopted at $300,000. Again, using one-time money for one-time expenditures, critical investments into the organization. And then we developed a long-range forecast. So instead of doing one-year planning, the budget book that you reviewed and adopted had a five-year forecast embedded into it. We adopted, we took a look at a whole host of initial revenue strategies, the most significant of which the city council decided to put before voters, and that was Measure G that was approved in November 2019. We had our budget development process. And then we're right now sort of nearing the end of February where we're looking at other strategies that can be implemented. One of the things that will be coming before the council in short order as we go through this budget process in March into November 2020 is a recommendation from the city of staff, from staff that we look into placing a measure on the November 2020 ballot for a TLT increase. That's our transient occupancy tax, increasing the city's hotel room tax from the current 12% to 14%. Council will remember that was one of the other strategies that we looked at. And that would raise approximately half a million dollars of ongoing revenue by increasing the hotel room tax by 2%. And so we're doing some initial exploratory work on that, and staff will likely be bringing that before the council. I also want to remind the public of our user fee study that staff has embarked upon, and we brought the city council preliminary results of that and where the consultant analyzed all of our user fees from across the city. And there are a number of recommendations that's being developed to increase our user fees that will actually increase revenue, really on a number of key areas. One of the things that council will remember is that we looked at what the city's fees are for major development projects and the desire to recover our full cost. And so as we bring those forward over the next month, the city council will have recommendations before to increase our fees, thus recover more money. And again, it's not a quick project. It's going to take us a long time to work our way out of the fiscal reality that frankly has developed over a number of years here. And so we're all working diligently at it. I think the partnership amongst the city staff, I really want to take this moment to thank my executive management team, but then all of the managers and supervisors in the city when we met to go over and articulate the recommendations that would be made before the city council. I thought it was important that the entire management and supervisor team for the entire organization really know and understand our fiscal reality. And so I want to thank everybody for that session we had just over a week ago. And so some key takeaways, sluggish sales tax revenue. And that sluggish largely reflective of we do not have a significant, robust sales tax base because we are largely dependent on a few major areas. Tanfran, Town Center, major anchors in Tanfran, and we see that with the closure of Sears. Business tax revenue decline, again, we talked about the loss of Sky Park and one business that can close really due to no actions of the city, larger economic swings, and how frankly, airport parking, that entire business has changed with the advent. That entire business has changed with the advent of Rideshare, Uber, Lyft, and also with the actions that the San Francisco Airport undertook to increase and over a number of years, increase the amount of on-airport site parking garages, which thus had an impact on the viability of off-airport parking. And so, we have Sky Park that we know now has closed. And our permit revenue is down from delays in developments and this is in many ways a bright spot and a down spot. Of the $2 million that we are down in this mid-year due to delays, 1.7 of that is solely related to YouTube. And so, that will be before the council in the next few months within the 2020 calendar year. It will not happen within this fiscal year. And so, that will be before the city council. And one of the things that Keith alluded to that I just want to repeat is we find ourselves in a position where our planning and development staff, with the amount of projects that are on their plate, the amount of interest in some of our opportunity sites and the transit corridors plan, we're having a hard time grappling with getting through all of that and processing all those projects. And so, it's both a good thing and a negative thing that's impacting our budget. But again, those projects are going to take some time to work themselves through the entitlement and the building permit process. But I do still very much believe that the outlook on San Bruno is brighter in the future than it is currently because we do have a number of development projects that are in the pipeline. Frankly, with property owners and developers that are eagerly waiting to come out of that entitlement and permitting process to actually have a shovel in the ground and get their projects constructed. In addition, we know we have a number of projects that have not yet entered the entitlement phase. That is the sale of the potential sale of the Ingval site to Polte Development for single-family homes. That is the subcommittee, the ad hoc committee that we talked about establishing today with the high school district, looking at the sale of the Crestmore High School site. And so, those projects are, will be entering the pipeline and we look forward to working through those entitlement processes and bringing them before the city council. But we have a fiscal reality and we're in a critical point right now and we need to appropriately navigate it, navigate through it. So, I hope the city council will understand that the budget strategies that the staff has developed and are recommending was done with significant thought, significant care for the community and protecting services, but frankly, unfortunately reflective of the situation that is before us. And so, with that, we are here at the council discussion and direction portion. We are open for any questions.
I was going to say thank you, but I know a lot of work and time and effort in your explanation and the staff working on this. So, thank you for that. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just going to, real quick, there's no great answer, but there's a lot that has to be covered. I'm just going to say, and then I want to hear from my colleagues, of course, but on the various items to balance the budget. One is item F, which is utilization of Measure G funds in the amount of 500,000. Though, I think that it is understandable, the discussion, and I think it validates what it was intended for. However, I think at this phase, as we're just initiating that, as it takes effect on April 1st, I'm not comfortable utilizing that as a mechanism at this time. I might suggest if it were taken off, for example, the rest could be passed without Measure G and would be something that we could wait for the third quarter report, potentially. See where we're at. If property tax revenue is increased, if vacant position salary costs have been saved, if non-salary items have. And if we do need to take something, maybe we do it out of the reserve funds. In keeping with the practice and the policy, the Equipment Reserve Fund, I believe, has no policy and it could be taken down more if necessary. But just as far as me sitting up here, I know there's a lot to discuss and go over, but on the Measure G, I personally, I'm having a concern with that viability. And I think to the community would be looked like, well, so we pass it and now here, before we even have a citizens oversight committee that we have now, these monies going because we have a deficit. And I don't know that that's what was intended, though I can understand why it's here as a option. So, that's just my real concern on Measure G. But I want to open it, if there's any comments to staff first and then, of course, if any folks here, I know there were no speaker cards. So, I don't know if there's anybody in the audience? Counsel?
The chair?
Yes, Michael.
So, it looks like the biggest portion of this, half of it came from our predictions on the development projects that didn't quite make it in time. Looking back at what we could have done different to help move those projects along. Could we have made more investments in staff that could have helped those projects move along? Did we sort of miss a key funding opportunity or something that could have averted that portion of the shortfall?
Sure. Let me take that. And I think there are a couple parts there. One, when staff developed the projections for all the permit revenue, it was conservative. So, everything that was in the pipeline was not, is not what was recommended and included in the budget. And there was a conservative projection. To your question on would more staff resources or just resources in general, whether they were staff or contract, would that have been helpful in hindsight 2020? We do have a bandwidth capacity and more resources would be helpful. Counsel will remember that there were, I believe, two additional, maybe two additional positions in the Community and Economic Development Department that due to our desire to have a balanced budget and reduce that structural deficit, there was a direction to remove those from the budget and not give authorization for those positions to begin. In the first six months of the fiscal year, we did articulate at that time that that would have an impact on workload and our ability for throughput. But I really don't think it's worth tying or looking back hindsight 2020 because all of these individual projects are delayed for various reasons. Processing, new information that the applicant had to go back and receive, a hiccup that happens in the development review process where you say, oh, you know what? We need this study or this consultant has to provide additional information. And so, to sort of recreate that would be a really significant analysis. What I would say is all of the projects are moving forward. We are confident that they will all be before the city council, those that need city council action and others that are proceeding forward on either a staff review level or a planning commission level. All the projects are moving. We do have a bandwidth capacity and one of the things that we are looking at is the ability to augment that capacity with additional consulting work. Those initial figures that Keith put up showed how our staffing is really roughly what it was 16 years ago. And so, we are staffed sort of at a minimum and especially in development review, we are not stacked for the volume of services that we're experiencing now. And so, we do need to strategically look at how we can expand our capacity. And the fee study will help out and provide revenue for that as well. So, we'll have those conversations around our budget time.
And so, clearly, a concern is that we continue to make the same mistakes going forward and you know, these projects are still in the pipeline and we're going to go into the next fiscal year still constrained. And I want to make sure that if decisions that we're making up here are sort of contributing to that problem, that we be aware of that and so that we don't continue to repeat the same mistake if it is something that by policy, we're creating down the line. Given that we still have a few months left in the fiscal year, is there anything that we can do in terms of investments in temporary staff or anything else that could help move some of these projects forward so that we could realize some of that revenue this fiscal year?
At this point, I don't know that there are additional investments that can be made that will have a measurable impact on the fiscal shortfall that we're facing. Additional investments would have a significant impact on capacity and the ability of staff to work through the workload. One of the things that staff is currently looking at and the city manager's office is looking at is the ability to bring on additional consultants in both planning for entitlement review, building for permit, for building permit review, building inspection. Because even though we have a pinch point now getting through the entitlement phase and the building permit, once those projects are approved, we're going to have a lot of projects under construction and we're going to need additional resources to inspect those projects while they're under construction and in our public works engineering phase. So, we are actively looking for consultants that can help out with that and the money to fund that we will work to identify.
And I also share some of the mayor's concerns about the use of the Measure G funds for a few reasons, some of which he stated. You know, first of all, we don't even have our advisory committee in place yet. It does seem like we're going askew of what we committed to the taxpayers. And also, it's, you know, we're going on projections on something that's not even going in place yet. And so, we're kind of taking it on faith that it's going to materialize and it's kind of hard for me to say with any level of certainty that it's going to come in at the level that we're assuming. So, is it possible that we could look at just using our general fund reserves to cover that difference? I mean, I don't think we have a policy that specifically says what type of situation would trigger the use of those funds. But to me, it seems like this is a budget emergency and it would be appropriate to use those funds to make up the difference. And then, as our policy, refill that when the funds are available.
So, the city's reserve policy does articulate how there is to be a $1.5 million unappropriated fund balance in the city's general fund. And through a resolution of the city council, an action can be taken to go below that $1.5 million fund balance. A similar action can be taken to reduce the city's general fund reserve, which again, is set at 25% of the annual operating expenditure budget. You also can take an action to go below that 25% threshold. The other reserve in the reserve fund is the emergency disaster reserve fund, which is set at $3 million. The reserve policy says that a declaration of an emergency must be taken in order to actively use that funds. And if you recall, that fund was actually accessed a couple of months ago with the slope stabilization project on San Bruno Avenue to declare a local emergency, to access that funding source and also trigger the bypassing of the public works construction project bidding process. So, the two funds that I mentioned first, the unappropriated fund balance can be utilized and also the general fund, reserve fund can also be utilized.
And if I could, between those two, I would proffer that the fund balance would be first in line before the reserve fund. Fund balance is really the way to think about it. It's the money you want to leave in your checking account in case something happens and this is something happening. And so, to reduce that policy by one point, from 1.5 and pull half a million from there, if you were so inclined, would be an appropriate shift.
Yeah, I mean, I always saw it as a rainy day fund and it's kind of raining. So, thank you.
Marty?
Yeah, this is difficult and, but we have to face reality. I appreciate staff's efforts in bringing this forward. I have just a couple easier questions. How much is the reduction in community day? It's, we don't spend much in there.
I believe it's $10,000. And $10,000.
I'll share and repeat. My concern is as we, we were at the city council retreat this past Saturday for the public. We had one person attend and they're here. Two? Oh, two, that's right, two. And we heard repeatedly how across all our departments that they're at their capacity and they need more help to do the work. That registered loud and clear. And here we are having a capacity problem where in the department that brings the money in, which is in community development, right? And staff did ask in budget last year for that and I don't want to make the same mistake going forward with that. So, I'm in favor of examining how to provide that capacity because more things are coming to San Bruno. And that's understandable that we have to have development to pay forward and invest into our community and that's what reality is going to be for us. And if we don't have the staff to process that, we're just going to be delayed more and more and we're going to have more problems meeting our revenues to pay for the things that we all want. So, I'll offer and encourage staff to come back to us and I am in favor of tapping into the reserves and that's what reserves are there for when you need to make up for something when you don't have the funds for it in your general operating budget. I have my apprehension with Measure G. This amount of expenditure would project it to take 12.5% of it. And if we could avoid that for now, I would like staff to figure that out by going into the reserves. But retaining that flexibility and getting the subcommittee or the committee, the oversight committee on board because these are some really challenging times. So, I'm in favor of the TLT increase, something that we talked about in the past. And it's hard when, and we just, and I'll say it, we just approve raises. And I can tell you right now, if I, you don't get a raise when there's no money. That's understandable. We all have to tighten our belts and you don't spend money you don't have. So, it's currently in our budget to pay for that, but it's something that was unforeseen with, I guess, the biggest one is the Sky Park. And it's in the, if we are in, if we did file a suit, can we share how much that lawsuit is for to recover?
So, I would prefer not to because we are still supposed to keep the exact figures confidential under our code. But I think as the finance director indicated, it's a substantial portion of the business license tax that the city is not expending. And I would not rely on the ability to recover those funds in the lawsuit to fund any hole in the city's budget.
And my point in that is that is something that's absolutely out of our control. When a business decides not to pay the taxes and then goes... They did file for bankruptcy, is that?
They have not, but they've clearly gone out of business and closed up their shop.
So, and then, just so I heard it right, 1.7 million of the 2 million in permit fees is one project at YouTube. And that's not going to come back by the end of this fiscal year. So, correct. Just make sure I heard that right.
It will be before the city council, likely next. But I don't know the exact date, but the revenues will not... But I don't know the exact date, but the revenues will not come in this fiscal year. Whether the project is actually before you in this fiscal year, I don't know the precise timing on that, but certainly the revenue would be next fiscal year, subject to approval.
Okay. I know we have a couple of other colleagues here to comment and seeing what the next step is, I guess we'll hear of that as soon as we finish up. Thank you.
Linda, I mean, Laura, I apologize. So first of all, I realize staff has had to make some difficult decisions. And I know that, and I'm sure that this is how Keith takes his job very seriously. And going through this process has been very challenging. I can only imagine myself going through my own checking account and trying to figure out and how to balance it. You see these numbers, and the numbers aren't coming up in the way that you want. And then knowing sort of the commitments and how we can all make this happen. So I really appreciate the work that you've put into this and have come together and the hours that you put with, along with your department and the city manager and coming with a proposal that has some really good suggestions and things. I also, I hear what staff is saying in terms of not wanting to reduce the public services that we offer, right? And that's something that we never want to do, right? And I also hear that we don't ever want to reduce public safety. And I think we could probably all agree up here that public safety is going to be our number one, right? Like, I want to be able to feel like I'm confident in that we're securing our city, that we can call 911, and we can get somebody to respond, and that we have a safe city. But on the flip side of that, you know, when we have to reduce services on things that aren't public safety, then maybe we need to go down that road. And so I appreciate, like, you've been taking into consideration to remove funds from the community day. Because in my mind, when I'm trying to balance my own budget, those are the kind of things, like, those are the nice to haves, but they're not the needs to have. And so what I would ask staff to do is look at, what are some things we've always done that we really don't need to do? Because things like an Easter egg hunt, and we've always done an Easter egg hunt, brings staff, and staff's got to show up. So what are some things we can do and cut back? And frankly, I get some concern, not only about this budget, but about what you're going to say next year and the year after that. Because when I look at sales tax, I've always said this, they're not increasing in San Bruno. Sales tax has been flat, and now we're seeing a decline. I guarantee you, all of us all shop very differently than we did five years ago. We buy online, and stores are closing. So today it's Sears, who's tomorrow, right? You know, to lose Sears, where we're no longer buying the appliances in San Bruno is a big hit. Hopefully residents are going to go over to Lowe's and spend that money at Lowe's and make those big purchases. You know, one day it was San Bruno Ford that was gone, and that was a huge hit to San Bruno. Car sales are dropping. So we, as a council, have to start being very conservative in what we do. And I think that all the departments need to start thinking, okay, where do we cut back? How do we be creative in our budget? Because this is budget this year, but what about at the end of the year? Where do we cut again? I think, you know, I think the message is loud and clear about development. Development is a big hit. I mean, knowing that we have developments coming into San Bruno, thank God, that we have these new developments, where we're going to get development impact fees, and there's win-wins for there. Because as you very nicely stated, our city doesn't have a lot of funds coming in. And you look at the growth capacity, it's increasing. You look at staff increase, and it's not happening, but yet. And we're only increasing by 5% every year in terms of our, I mean, that's crazy. I don't even know how we continue to manage to balance a budget every year. So I really strongly say we need to start looking at things we always do. And if that means canceling things we've always done that cost us funds, and I guess what I look at is where is the staff time? Right? We may not have a big expense that we purchase these things, but bring in people and overtime. How do we reduce the overtime if we can in that area? You know, again, I said sales tax revenue. I think the comments I've heard from the other colleagues about Measure G funds, it sounds like we need to get an oversight committee in so that we can start at some point very soon using those funds. But the proposal is to use those funds in the way they're intended as well. So I'm very kind of torn on that because you specifically specified to use it towards police funds, and I think that's the most important thing. And so I think the way it was presented tonight, I am actually in favor of what you've proposed. I echo your comments about development and, you know, where we can improve and bring in the consultants, I think, because those are revenues into San Bruno that are big hits. And a 1.2 million, et cetera, is a hit. So I think staff already knows, and they already have a plan moving forward. So thank you for the presentation.
Linda.
Thank you. So when you focused on the developments that were coming, is the revenue that's coming in because of the May 1st development impact fees?
No, the fees that we're talking about here are not the development impact fees. These are permit fees that are paid to the building department for permit review. The development impact fee is a completely separate fee that a developer will pay that goes into a separate fund that will be used to pay for capital improvement projects in the long term.
Can you flesh that out just a little bit more for me? So if they're going to go to capital improvement plans and you were cutting capital improvement projects, will they balance out in the next year if these developments go through?
So it's really a timing issue. And so the answer is probably not within the next year. The development impact fee revenue will increase as development is actually occurring, right? So the development impact fee will be paid typically on building permit issuance, I believe. And so as development projects get their permits issued, they will pay the development impact fee. And then there needs to be adequate funding in the development impact fee fund that can be used and appropriated as probably one of multiple funding sources to actually go and implement an infrastructure capital improvement project. And that might occur over a series of multiple years.
Okay. So with that said, then, would we, in the next year, if these projects go through, because I believe what was said was that they're behind schedule, or they didn't, for whatever reason, we didn't get the funds for them this year, does that mean that next year we will definitely not be in a deficit? If these projects continue down the right path?
So the projects that are delayed are projected to be before the city council in the next fiscal year. And those revenues that were projected to come in this fiscal year will be projected to come in next fiscal year. I think specifically to will we be in a deficit next year? We are sort of in the middle of the beginning portions of our FY 2021 budget development process. There are three major components of this shortfall that will continue. The $1 million loss in VLF, the loss of the Sears sales tax, and the loss of Sky Park. In particular, to those last two, the Sky Park site is a 13-acre site. It is a major warehouse. We have been in talks with the property owners and potential developers. That may see a proposal before the city for a significant reshifting of the use of that project. But that is likely a three- to five-year-plus project before a shovel is in the ground. And so that sort of backfill of that business license fee from the airport, we may not see that in additional property tax or additional revenue from that property for quite some time. And I think the same thing is true for the Sears building. We've been in contact with Sarah Taj that owns that building, both before the closure and as recently as last week. But it may be 24 months or more before that building is really, that property is reused and we see additional revenue coming back off there. So we may have to live with this reality for a while.
Okay. So Keith mentioned that there was a potential ballot measure that I believe was five, could bring in another $500,000 of TOT. Is there any anticipated revenue from the short-term rentals that we discussed recently?
So there was a study session that was held at council, I believe, a few months ago, where we discussed the potential program features and got some guidance from city council at that time. Staff are working on finalizing sort of how that program is to be implemented and finalizing the edits to the ordinance. And so that will come back to the city council, and I believe it has to go to the planning commission first before coming back to the city council for an action. If enacted the way that the program was communicated to the council at that time, there will be some additional revenues that the city will realize. It will come from a number of sources. The first will be some additional TOT revenue. And so short-term rentals act like a hotel. And so we will see some additional TOT revenue from the activity of short-term rentals. All of the short-term rental operators will be required to obtain a business license. So the city will recognize some business license tax revenue from that as well. There will likely be a short-term rental permit fee that they will have to pay at the Community and Economic Development Department for just the annual and the biannual review of their short-term rental property. But overall, the fiscal projection that was developed for the short-term rental program, if I recall correctly, it was just over about $100,000 a year of total revenue from those three revenue sources after you net out the cost to the city of actually implementing the program. The city would only realize about $100,000 of additional revenue. So again, not that significant when talking about the greater general fund as a whole.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I mentioned this on Saturday, but for purposes of this meeting, is the city taking any interest in reviewing the card table fees? And whether, I believe the city attorney mentioned that they would, would that have to be on the ballot? I can't recall.
No, I think I said that the fee, the card table fee is, in essence, a business tax on the card room, and it's based on the number of tables, not based on gross revenues. That is done by ordinance. And if the city were to seek to increase that business license tax, it would require a vote of the people in order to do that because it's increasing a tax. So it's not something the city council can just do.
So it would have to be on the ballot?
That's right.
Okay. And with that said, where is, has the city compared our taxes or our fees to other cities who have card houses as well?
Yeah. So that work has not been formally conducted. I think this point brings up another issue that I can alert the public and the council to, which is there is a pending state legislation that may actually impact the amount of money that cities receive from card rooms. And the projection is that it would significantly reduce the revenue that municipalities receive. And so we have been very actively monitoring that, working with other cities that are monitoring that potential state legislation to the point where we've been up to Sacramento to attend a hearing there and have been talking to some of the other neighboring jurisdictions that have card rooms. And so there's, you know, if there are ways to increase that revenue, I think that's something that is worth exploring. This year, we have been, vis a vis that revenue, sort of laser-focused on making sure that we're paying attention to the state legislation that may actually take money away.
And then what about using or asking for any Measure K funds?
Yeah, so staff is looking at ways to explore additional Measure K revenues, and will be looking to schedule a study session with the city council on a potential Measure K request from the city of San Bruno to the county.
Okay. And then also, if we're, I guess we're approving, right, adopting a resolution approving the budget balancing strategies and second quarter budget amendment? So are we, I just want to make sure that I'm clear in what we're approving. The second quarter budget amendment is based on the recommendations that were just given. So if we're going to approve an amendment, I also wanted to ask then if we could work into the amendment a grant-writing consultant? I think that this has been discussed on and off, but if we're looking for revenue sources, there are consultants out there that write grants every month for a base fee. And I think it's something we really need to get serious about with 4.2 million dollars in debt.
Sure. Take the first part, I'll take the next part.
I'll answer the first part of your question, Councilmember Mason. And so the resolution before the council this evening, there is really twofold. The first part of the resolution is a table that summarizes the budget balancing strategies in order to address the shortfall that staff is projecting in the current fiscal year general fund operating budget. Then the second table on the resolution is what we're calling the budget amendments. And those are, one of the items was the grant that we're receiving for $160,000 for the zoning code update. And the other one is the appropriation of the money that was given for medical supplies. So that's the budget amendment section of the resolution.
Right, but we're approving an update to the budget.
Right, right.
So my suggestion is to include in that update a grant consultant that can write grants for this last half of the fiscal year.
Right. Absolutely. Let me address that. So what is before the city council is an action to amend the budget. So within that action, making any other addition or subtraction to the budget is possible through an amendment. What I would also say is grant-writing consultants, in my experience, roughly cost around $6,000 a month. And so if we are going to incur that expense, we would need to identify revenues to do that. And so that is either identifying additional cuts at this time to fund that expense or additional monies that we would pull from fund balance to cover that cost. In addition, what I would say is should we undertake that effort, the city would need to issue an RFP for grant-writing assistance, vet the proposals that we get, and then select them. And so that process will likely take three to four months. And so I would not make an allocation of $6,000 a month for the remaining months. I would undercut that because that RFP process has to occur. From the city manager's seat, I am not opposed to that. I think that it is an effort that may yield resources, and it's something that, you know, sometimes you have to invest money to see if there is a return. I think working on that RFP is something that can be undertaken. I would just not want to entertain that on the fly and promise when staff could draft that, issue it, and manage that process. I'd like a little time to think about that and proffer that back to the city council.
So I would support that amendment tonight, especially if we're going to be taking money from reserves. The next, I guess the next point I just want to make is regarding the use of funds of Measure G. I echo what all of my fellow council colleagues have said. This was really the main reason that I didn't support Measure G. It wasn't that I didn't see that we have potholes and that we need street repair. It was that I was worried it was going to be used as a slush fund when needed. And so my concern around Measure G is that we don't have an oversight committee, and it's the first place we've gone to fulfill the deficit. So I would really like the first time we use Measure G to be used to fill potholes. And I'd also really like the city to create some kind of policy or process wherein Measure G funds are allocated specifically for what they were intended and for what all the marketing materials showed, which were sidewalk repairs and potholes. So while I understand that it's an allowable expense, I don't believe that that was really the intent of Measure G to use it to fill the deficit that we have. So that's my, and especially we're using money that we don't even have yet. I mean, it doesn't become effective until April 1st. So that's my comment on Measure G. And then my final comment is regarding the library HVAC. I just feel like the library is already on a shoestring budget, and they do so much with so little. I'm really sad to see that the $359,000 the library is what's being cut. And if there's any other project that can be cut instead of the library HVAC, I'd really like to see that. Like city manager Jevon Gergen mentioned, you know, this is a short period of time to think about grants. Maybe we don't receive this tonight, and we receive it in two weeks when we have a little more time to think about this. Because I think $359,000 of all the capital projects I saw, the library is probably the one most utilized on a day-to-day basis by the public. And so I'd hate to see something more cut from the library that is truly already on a shoestring budget and very utilized by the community. Thank you.
Sure. Just on the HVAC for the library and the PD. And I think operationally, the need for both of those may be on equal playing field with the one at the PD even a little bit more critical just because it has to be reset anytime the temperature reaches a certain level in the building. a certain level in the building. Earlier, when I alluded to, we were gonna look at a Band-Aid approach, look into a Band-Aid approach for the HVAC at the police station. What I also said is should that not be successful, we would return to the city council with a request to potentially fund that through another reserve account. We do, in our facility reserve account, have a balance of $5 million. Both of these projects were funded out of general fund money, and so we are pulling the general fund money to help use, address a shortfall. But should both of those projects need to be funded and need to be done in a more expeditious manner, we could look into using money out of the building reserve fund. Now, the reason why these were funded with the general fund, because when we look at all of the needs in all of our buildings, $5 million is not a significant balance, and so we want it at budget time to use general fund money. But should there not be general fund money, pulling that from your building reserve fund would be a very appropriate expenditure.
Okay, so with no more questions at this time, we do have a couple things. Listening to my colleagues on the Measure G usage of the $500,000, I've heard at least from three, definitely, and Marty, I know you talked about reserves, were you saying that in lieu of G, or is that, that's what, my notes weren't clear?
I would prefer to dip into the reserves than to touch the Measure G funds.
Okay, so I've heard from, and I know Laura was okay, based on the explanation and based where the funds were being allocated to. With that said, if we go ahead and remove Measure G, the $500,000 obviously were short, at 3.7. So is there, if we were to go forward with this, is there a way to have the third quarter report come in to us to see exactly where we're at, if there's potential savings? And I think I've heard from a majority of the council, they're leaning toward the reserves, potentially equipment or what have you, or you used another fund, the general fund balance?
Fund balance, it's not clear, fund balance.
So what do you need from us?
I think the city council could make a motion removing the use of Measure G and directing staff to return at the third quarter with an update on where the city is on the shortfall. And at that time, should the shortfall remain, request that the city use fund balance instead of Measure G.
Laura?
Can I comment? I just wanted to clarify what the Measure B, Measure G ballot actually read. And it says, "San Bruno Street Repair Local City Service Measures. Now, the city of San Bruno measures to fund the city services facilities such as neighborhood police patrols, fire prevention service, urban wildfire protection, crime suppression investigation, pothole street repair, increased parking supply, upgrading parks and other city services facilities, expanding services supporting local business by levying a half cent sales tax provided approximately $4 million annually until the end by voters with independent citizen oversight. No money for Sacramento, all funds spent locally." So my question, I guess I would ask is, what's the plan for an oversight committee so that we really could use those funds, just as you've indicated?
So the recruitment for the Oversight Board, council authorized, and I believe the initial recruitment period closed, but it is still open, pending, waiting for additional applicants. Last time I checked, I think we had four applicants?
Yes, we have four. The application period ended on February 14th, but our office does take applications anytime year-round. But the initial recruitment period did end on February 14th.
Yeah, it is a five-person body. We will start the process of scheduling those interviews with the city council, and still very much want to have that committee established for our budget discussions that will be forthcoming in a number of months. But if there's anyone interested in that committee, please turn in your application. The city council will be reviewing applications soon.
Thank you.
And of course, there were other items and comments from council, whether it's, not saying you haven't looked deep, but if there are things that, I think the comment was, are there things that we have that we can do without, or, you know, whether that means getting sponsorship for an Easter egg hunt, for example, or what have you. But from council, what I am hearing, unless anyone wants to take action on the resolution, was to go ahead and accept the mid-year report, and then also add, to help balance the budget, the reductions, removing Measure G funds, and city manager wanting that replaced with general fund balance if necessary, but after review at the third quarter? Okay, hopefully I didn't confuse everybody. Does that seem kind of in a consensus of what we kind of discussed? Marty?
It's definitely with what we discussed, is that, I guess that's the next question, if it's okay, like?
You mean, is it okay for us to move forward on this?
Right.
With that caveats?
Right.
Yes, city attorney said yes.
Low and some clarification from my fellow council on the grant, on the grant issue?
Mm-hmm.
So that can be an amendment tonight, or we can ask staff to bring it back, or we can not do anything. So I'd just like to ask what my fellow council members believe.
Sure. Marty, and then so?
So I'm definitely in support of pursuing a grant, a professional grant writer to assist with the grants. But I also understand that our city manager will be coming back with it, but I can express my support of it. I don't know if, at this point, unless that's the motion to include it.
And then my question is, really to the council, what they'd support tonight? And if you don't support it tonight as part of the amendment, then are we all on board to ask the city manager to bring back more information on it, the third quarter report?
I'll say yes to that.
On which part? The amendment or to bring it back?
To bring it back.
Okay. I also would share, because I think the manager said, A, we have to find the resources, two, I think we've learned over the time to be up here and start to allocate monies and rearrange stuff, we need to give, I think, the respect to the staff to come back and look. But I am in favor of having that looked into.
Through the chair, actually, councilmember Salazar and I actually spoke to the city manager earlier, at the end of, end of the year, about that same thing. And it is something that we, I think we're all in agreement with, and exactly, I don't think tonight's the right time to include that, but I think staff has a clear direction. It is something we're interested in. Spend money, make money.
Invest. Okay, is that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, any action by council?
Through the chair?
Yes.
And I did want to include one final comment. I admit to do this at the beginning of my last comments, but I wanted to thank staff, especially Mr. DiMartini and Mr. Grogan, for the level of analysis that they did in this, and bringing us all the details and flushing out all of the details of how we got here. So thank you for all the work on that. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the resolution with the exception of the Measure G fund portion.
Is that?
I will second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And thank you again very much for all the work and the effort. We'll move on to item C, please.
Item 7C, receive a report and provide direction regarding amendments to San Bruno Municipal Code Title IV, licenses and regulations, as part of a comprehensive municipal code update.
Just making sure the electronics work, sorry. Thank you very much. So we're here tonight to talk about revisions to the municipal code Title IV. This was going to be a complicated presentation with numbers regarding the over 100 pages of Title IV in the staff report, but after Mr. DiMartini and Mr. Grogan's presentation on the budget, we've decided to reduce the number of slides and eliminate any numbers from the presentation. So our agenda for tonight is we have a little bit of background, especially since the city council members haven't seen one of the chapters for a couple of months. We're going to have a somewhat more detailed discussion regarding Title IV, which is called licenses and regulations, and then we're going to talk about next steps. So just a bit of background, we started this process in October of 2018. The city council provided direction to the city attorney's office for a comprehensive amendment to the city's municipal code. And the question is, well, why are we doing this? And as a reminder, many of the sections of the code date to the 1980s. We wanted to address, so any internal inconsistencies, changes in state law, case law, and implement best practices for the 21st century. We were also guided by the principle that if we didn't perceive, or if the city council didn't perceive that there was a problem, we shouldn't try to implement a solution just to update the code. Because in many instances, even though the code is upwards of 20 or 30 years old, in some places, and we'll talk about this evening, it's actually working quite well, and there's no obvious need for an amendment. And of course, the city council retains the authority to amend the code really whenever they want and when circumstances are required. So what we did back in October is we retained a quality code publishing with the assistance of the city clerks department, and they performed an initial sort of overall legal review of all 11 titles of the code. Title 12 is zoning, and we're not going to be doing that, at least not immediately, although you have seen some amendments to the zoning code brought forward by the Community Development Department with assistance from other departments. So we estimated at that time in October of 2018 that it would take two to three years to go through all 11 titles of the code, including review by quality code publishing and outside counsel. So in late October of 2018, we initiated introduction of Title I, the amendments to Title I, which is called general provisions, and then Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.04. And then shortly thereafter, in November of 2018, Quality Code Publishing actually completed their initial review of all 11 titles, which was great to have that so quickly. So we've sort of got these things stacked up and ready to come to you, subject primarily to constraints based on staff time to review and city council agenda time. And as you can see, it's already late, so we'll try to do this as quickly but comprehensively as possible. So in November of 2018, the city council did adopt amendments to Title I and a portion of Title II. What we did in Title I is we revised some sections on appeals, on claims to be consistent with new state law, and a developer indemnity topic that has come up in a number of contexts before. And then in Title II, we revised the election procedures to conform with California law. There is new state law having to do with even your elections, and also the vice mayor selection process, which was recently implemented. And then in July of 2019, the city council adopted revisions to the rest of Title II, in all of Title III, revenue and finance. And so thank you to the finance department, especially for their assistance on that. And one of the changes that we did make in Title III at the request of the city council was to include a provision that would allow the city, would authorize the city to collect TOT from Airbnb rentals once that program is implemented. So you've laid the groundwork for that. So let's talk a little bit about what's actually in Title IV. And Title IV is rather daunting. There are 17 chapters. The good news is that we're not proposing any amendments to four of those chapters, Chapter 4.08, 4.20, 4.28, and 4.56. And you might wonder, well, why is that? And for, I do want to have a caveat, for 4.08, which is entitled Dance and Entertainment Events, you can see it's sort of, the wording's a little outdated, what that really refers to are special events that occur in the city. And the city is currently working on, and has already done extensive work across all different departments, on working on a special events policy so that individuals who come to the city and request an event like a run, or a barbecue, or whatever, or a party, a block party, can go through a process for the city that allows those events to occur and allows the city to recover costs and make sure there's adequate insurance. So it's actually likely we're gonna have to come back at a later date with some changes to 4.08, but we didn't want to hold anything up. We're, I'm recommending, let's just go forward, we can come back and do a cleanup later if we need to. With respect to 4.20 Regulation of Vehicle Vendors, this is sometimes a topic that people are interested in. There's, you know, trucks outside on El Camino or other streets vending food. We are not suggesting any changes at this time to that chapter unless the city council believes that the changes are warranted, and then we can certainly look into them. The staff report talks about the threatened litigation that occurred some years ago before I came to the city, and the reason why that chapter was adopted as it was, and so we're not recommending any changes at the moment. Chapter, oh, excuse me, Chapter 4.56, Distribution of Written Materials, also comes up occasionally in two contexts. Mr. Rekel, who is no longer here, often provides me with a little baggie and a rock inside and a phone number, a cell number of somebody who's offering gardening services, and asks, can't we prohibit people from throwing a rock on their driveway in a little bag? And mostly, the answer is, well, we can adopt an ordinance, but we can't really enforce it, because it's a cell phone number, there's no address, there's no way to contact the person, really. They don't have to answer the phone once they know it's the city calling. So that's a difficult thing. It also comes up sometimes when people complain about an organization putting flyers on people's windshields in a parking lot. And there's actually a case about that. One city tried to prohibit that practice, saying that flyers were going all over the place, and it was creating litter in the city. And the court said, not, not really, you can't really prove that. People have a First Amendment right to put flyers on your windshield, and the harm to you as the individual from plucking off a flyer or collecting the rock on the driveway is so minimal that we're, the court's gonna say the First Amendment's more important. So this is the reason why we're not proposing any changes to those chapters. We are proposing repeal of one chapter in total, which is called Item Pricing, not related to councilmember Mason's question about local preferences, but related instead to stores having to reflect items in scanners. And that has been now totally preempted by state law, so there's no reason to have that. So that's what we're not doing. So let's talk a little bit about what we are doing. And again, the good news is, out of all of those chapters, we are proposing only minor wording amendments to nine of those chapters, really to conform to state law and other wording changes. And in particular, I'm gonna put a couple of these up here. 4.04 Amusement Facilities, no change, but that might have to be changed later with the special events policy. No changes to private patrol, private parking facilities, private patrols. Let's talk about 4.36 Gambling Clubs. There's a couple of changes to that. Again, not related to the tax, but there's a new state law that says now cities can allow individuals who are between the ages of 18 and 20 to work in certain non-gaming floor positions at those facilities. So there's a reference to that, and we actually have to go back, thank you to the police department for flagging something for me, we have to go back and take a look at whether we can background those people, even if they're 19 years old and want to be a cook at Artichoke Joe's as opposed to working on the gaming floor. So we'll provide that when the ordinance comes back for introduction. We have massage businesses, we're not suggesting any changes except minor ones to that. 4.42 Pawn Brokers, kind of an interesting one. So some years ago, the city experienced a situation in which there was something called a reverse cellular vending machine installed at Tantran Mall. And that is a kiosk in which somebody shows up and sticks a cellular device in there, and something happens, we're not really sure what, and money comes out. And the result of that was a substantial interest by the state attorney general's office, that there was illegal, you know, sales and stolen property going on. Nobody really knew what the kiosk was doing. It was alleged that people were in Riverside County looking at a screen, looking at these machines, anyway. So we've included that in our code to make sure that those activities, which the police department and the attorney general's office had some concerns about, are not allowed in the city. The only other code that might attract some interest with just minor changes are what we call trailers and trailer courts. We're not doing anything to ask court services, but the trailers and trailer courts, you might wonder, well, is that people can camp in their cars? Is that some sort of, you know, should we be looking at that? Is that some sort of, you know, should we be looking at that more comprehensively? And basically, the answer is no, despite, this is one of those codes that even though it's a little on the old side, it's actually still consistent with all of the new cases and state law that's coming out. It also falls into the category of, if it's not broken and we don't have a problem right now, let's not try to write something that addresses a problem that we don't have at the moment. Again, you can always come back and revise it. So these are nine chapters that we made only minor changes to. All right, so let's talk about the three chapters or the three policy decisions for the city council tonight. So the first one is Chapter 4.16 Peddlers. And a peddler is somebody who sells goods and services door-to-door. So what we're doing with this chapter is really just making it consistent with a new state law that we're addressing in the next chapter, which is 4.18, called Pushcart and Sidewalk Vendors. So the only changes to 4.16 are really for consistency with state law and our own new Chapter 4.18, which we'll get to in a second. The one important thing that we're proposing for peddlers is the addition of what we call a Do Not Knock Registry. And this was an interesting idea that, I live in San Carlos, and it came up in that city, so I thought, huh, it might be worth proposing for the city of San Bruno. And what that is, is residents can voluntarily register with the city clerk's office and say that they don't want individuals who are either selling goods or services to come to their door. It has nothing to do with no soliciting signs. It just says, don't knock on my door. And vendors who have to get a permit from the police department have to agree, when they get that permit, that they have to comply with that registry. And as a resident, I can tell you, it works. I mean, since we've put our name on the registry, nobody's come to our door, except individuals who are soliciting for charitable contributions, which is still allowed, and of course, individuals who are engaging in political speech. So candidates, for example, may want to come door-to-door. So they're not peddlers or solicitors, they're not soliciting goods or services. So it's worked pretty well, it's something to consider, and so we'd want some direction from the city council tonight about whether this is something that you're interested in. So that's one of three sort of policy decisions. Second one has to do with, as I mentioned, pushcart and sidewalk vendors. So there's a new state law that, surprise of surprises, limits state authority, and the purpose of the law really was to incentivize individuals to cook food and sell it to the public. And in fact, one of the articles that a legal firm put out on it was entitled, "California Cooks Up Sidewalk Vending Law." So you sort of know immediately what the intent of the legislature was. So our proposed ordinance includes all of the requirements and limitations that are allowed for us to do by state law. Well, what are those things? And briefly, it's permits, insurance, can't block the sidewalk, there's health and safety compliance. We can prohibit stationary sidewalk vendors in all residential zones, so somebody can't set up a stand that isn't roaming around in any residential zone. You can't do it if there's a certified farmer's market, swap meets, or other events. Here's the interesting point, and it gets to parks. So we have to allow stationary vendors in parks unless there's a formal concessionaire. We don't have a formal concessionaire. There are temporary concessionaires that come for different sporting events, but they're not permanently there. On the other hand, we haven't gotten anybody who wants to be a stationary vendor in any of the parks. So here's the policy direction that we're requesting. And the question is, what about roaming vendors in parks? And we already have at least one of these individuals. I think he has a little ice cream pushcart. And state law is unclear. Not only do they take away city authority, but then they do it in an unclear way, unfortunately. And it looks like it says we can't outright ban roaming vendors in city parks. But state law says if you make a bunch of findings, which we did in the whereas clauses in the ordinance, you can regulate them. And how can you regulate them? Well, first, you could make them comply with everything that everybody else has to comply with, and we're proposing that. But the question for you tonight is, do we want other regulations? And those regulations have to be based on objective health, safety, or other findings. A finding that we don't like somebody selling ice cream because somebody else is selling ice cream is probably not one of those findings. So the question is, you can regulate hours, you can say only in certain parks. For example, you have two parks with restrooms, maybe you just want to limit it to those. We proposed, you know, you've got to stop one hour before the park closes. Anyway, that's an item we'll need to come back to and just need a little bit of direction from you on this evening, is what to do about the roaming sidewalk vendors, and are there any regulations that you want us to look at for those individuals? And then finally, the last policy decision has to do with Chapter 4.60 Bingo. So state law has changed quite a bit since our bingo ordinance was enacted. And one of the things the state law did is it took away the ability of cities to impose a gross receipts tax, which the city had in its ordinance. So now, the only fee that the city can receive from bingo operations is $50. The city can continue to receive rent for facility rental and other cost reimbursements from the nutrition side council, as you know, that runs the bingo operation. So here's the question for you tonight. State law does allow the city to have discretion about how many games per week there are. And right now, our ordinance says one, but currently, there are four occurring, and those games are occurring for money, so they all qualify as a bingo game under state law. And so what we've done is, we've proposed that the ordinance be amended to say there can be four bingo games per week here, for example, at the senior center. And if the city council has, wants to exercise its discretion, they can allow one additional game per week. Right now, the ordinance is written, one game a week and one additional game per week, which is obviously inconsistent with what's actually happening. So we just conformed it to what's actually happening and leave it up to you if you want to make any changes. A final point about this, and then I'll close, is that bingo is regulated by a section of the penal code. And the section, because it's, in essence, gambling, and what the penal code says is only certain organizations can operate bingo games. So for example, a city can't operate a bingo game, but a nonprofit can. And the nonprofit then is required to comply with various laws. And so they also have to use the proceeds of the bingo game only for charitable purposes. So that's what the nonprofits are dealing with, and I think you know that, you know, PTA's have, you know, school bingo games and so on, and so those are being operated by the nonprofits in connection with California law. So our next steps for this evening is to provide direction on those three policy issues. We are going to try to schedule, yes, we are, introduction and adoption of this in March or April, depending on what direction we receive this evening. We're also planning, Titles Five and Six are kind of waiting in the wings, so we can get those to you in the next number of months as staff time and agendas permit. And we are still on schedule to complete all 11 chapters by 2021. So that concludes my presentation. Again, our three policy issues are, do you want a Do Knock Knock, Do Not Knock Registry? What do you want to do about regulating roaming park vendors? And do you want to have bingo consistent with what's currently occurring? That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Just to clarify on the Don't Knock, I do like that approach, but also you said, folks for charitable, political, but also religious as well?
Yes, that's correct, because those individuals are not selling a good or service. If they would like to solicit for their church, or synagogue, or religious facility, they can do that.
Thank you. Question, Michael.
Thank you. So the registry would be more restrictive, or having a no soliciting sign on your house? So that has no bearing on people? I mean, it's a suggestion then, rather than a regulation, and this registry would then be, this would be an actual?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, a no soliciting sign is something that the city can't enforce. It's a neighbor, it's a resident saying, don't do this on my property, and it's like, well, okay. That's not an ordinance, there's no ordinance that says if you have a no soliciting sign, then we're going to come to your house and arrest the solicitor if they're there. So this would be a way for people to opt out. And the nice feature of it, that it is, it's totally voluntary, and it avoids the First Amendment problems with many cities trying to regulate, you know, people coming door-to-door. It's very difficult to do that, and I thought San Carlos had an elegant solution to it.
And I believe the staff report said that the penalty is, it's limited to taking away their license, basically telling them they can't do it anymore.
Right.
If they're not licensed in the first place, it probably
That's right.
Doesn't matter.
If I may, it's also pretty similar, yeah, it's also pretty similar to the Do Not Call Registry, so that exists, where you sign up, you put your phone numbers in there. Of course, it doesn't work all the time, everybody still gets a spam call.
Yeah, I still get calls.
But for a while, there was a good Band-Aid for the problem, until they found a way around it. But in this case, it's pretty solid so far with San Carlos, they've had a lot of success with this.
Okay. And then regarding the push carts, are there any known concerns at this point that we would want to try to address with this revision?
So I checked with Joanne in the Community Services Department. She was not aware of any. Others here may have heard of things. I have not been made aware of any in staff's review of the ordinance.
Okay, all right. So I can't think of anything I would want to tack on to that unless there's specific issues that we're trying to address. And what was the other one that we had to comment on?
Registry Bingo.
Oh, Bingo, Bingo. So the limitation on the number of games per week is also per site, right, per location?
Right.
So there could be, I mean, if every church in town wanted to have five bingo games a week?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Laura.
To the chair, love the idea of the Do Not Walk Registry. I think it's a great idea. I think it's just something else.
Go ahead.
Something else that we can give these residents to make them happy. I'm also happy to know that when I didn't knock on doors because it says no solicitations, that I actually could when I was campaigning, I didn't realize that. So thank you for clarifying that piece. You know, it's funny, one of the only highlights I had on your report, Mark, was the six to 9:00 PM on the peddlers. I just thought that was kind of late, so I would say to change that language to dawn or something, because parks really close, and they should be out of there by the time of Christ. I don't really want to see them at night when it's too dark. So it's been dark at 6:00 for a lot of weeks, and I would not want to see them in those parks during that time. And then I have no problems with the bingo.
You know, I did ask staff about that, because I thought, huh, that seems kind of late. And the response from staff was, well, there's concerts in the park, there are other things that go into the evening, and so is there a problem with having the vendors there later? And that's really, that's up to you.
That's good feedback. Does it change my mind? I just, I think for the few, I mean, that's a good question. So is a peddler considered somebody from a Lions group or a somebody else? No, right?
No, these are roaming vendors who are selling primarily food.
Yeah.
And that's what the new law is directed to. And so the question is, do you want to have, do you want to restrict the hours, or do you want to restrict the parks? And, you know, one way you could rationally restrict the parks they operate in is to say, well, only two of them have restrooms, and we really shouldn't be having people selling food in parks that don't have restrooms. So that would be a rational thing to do, but it's a policy decision.
Okay, I'll hear.
I got to follow up with that. Is there a limit on the number of push carts in the park? Is there?
You could impose a limit, but you have a really high standard for making some findings about that, that there is an over-concentration, that there's dozens of them, that they're running into each other, and I don't think we have the factual basis to make that.
Just curious about that. Currently, we don't have a problem with it, but if there were eight people trying to do that, then it could be a little bit of a problem. And I'm fine with the Don't Knock, I like that, and the Bingo, that's great. So I'm on board with those.
So I'm fine with the Do Not Walk, Do Not Knock. Thank you for bringing that to us, I think it's a great idea. The roaming park vendors, the ones that I see, there's two of them, the woman who sells the fruits and the gentleman who sells ice cream, and I speak with them regularly.
What was the first one again?
The woman who sells the fruits.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and they both leave at around 4:00 anyway. If there was going to be any kind of mandate that they have to leave early, I would say an hour before a park closes, but the reality is, I haven't seen that being an issue, that they're staying really late. And I honestly, for things like movies in the park and nice days in the summer, it is nice to have someone out there. The reality is that they normally aren't even out there, they leave around 4:00 or 5:00. In regards to the Bingo, I'm just curious, how much were we making off these Bingo games?
So that's a, actually turns out to be a very complicated question,
Okay.
which I'm going to look to. Where's our finance? Oh, look, there he is. And I'm not sure that even Keith has that information tonight. It might be worthwhile to.
Do you have anything you have to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
He was too busy preparing his other 50 slots. So, but we can provide a summary for, you know, for the city council about what that involves. There are limitations, I think it's 2,000 or something a month for rent, there's other amounts. And then most of those bingo proceeds are controlled by the nonprofit Nutrition Side Council, and so they choose how to allocate those funds. And actually, the city is restricted from spending those funds unless it's for a charitable purpose. So if the Nutrition Side Council were to give the city money to do a variety of things, which they have in the past, though, that has to be for a charitable purpose, and it can't be for a non-charitable purpose.
Okay. And then, thank you for the explanation. The, so you were going from one, and you said there's currently four games, so I would support maybe six, six in case there's a special event that week, or whatever it may be. So that's what I would propose. And then I have questions about some of the other policies, since we essentially are really approving this entire policy section, correct?
So
Those are the three you'd like direction on, but the entire policy is being approved?
If you have comments about the, any of the other sections, I'm happy to take them now. You can, if you have wording suggestions, feel free to send them to me afterward.
Okay.
And we'll take a look at them. This is going to come back for introduction, so you'll have a whole new opportunity to look at everything.
Okay.
And if individuals, if you have changes that you would like to make, I'll make sure that all of those are included in track changes, so you'll see what was suggested.
So just a couple of questions. I don't know if I have wording suggestions yet, but it'll help for clarification. For the 4.18.030, the permits, I'm just curious, for a valid, it requires a valid city of San Bruno license, and is that for somebody who comes for a fair? Like, let's say we do someday have a wine stroller, we do someday have some event in the park, and we have a vendor. Does, for just one, a one-day event, do they need to get a license?
So if they're a stationary vendor, the answer is yes. And that's authorized by the new state law. So they, you know, stationary vendors would have to receive, would have to get a license, have insurance, and those things.
Okay.
And, you know, I'll just say, it's, it can be an onerous requirement. Unfortunately, what we found is that these special events are really an extremely large source of risk to the community in a whole variety of different ways. And I think it's important, the policy question for the city council is, is the city doing everything it can to protect the city from that risk?
Yeah, great. And I think what I'd like to know is how onerous that process is in other cities, because I think that's something that the community has requested and would really like to see is more community events, and how do we make that easy for vendors to come to San Bruno? And that includes something like a farmer's market as well. My next question is regarding the vehicle vendors. This is 4.20, page 139.
What's the section again, sorry?
Page 139, it's vehicle vendors.
I'm sorry, my, I don't have a pagination.
Okay.
What's the section again? 4.?
4.20, and it's page 139.
4.20, point? Point which?
4.20, it looks like .030.
Okay.
And .040. There's a, it just, I have this in my notes. There's a section in here that says that it looks like the police has to somehow manage who's parking in the park with these vendors. And so just a suggestion, now that we've had a couple of events And so just a suggestion, now that we've had a couple of events and we know the cost of police staffing for these events, is maybe also include maybe someone from Park and Rec, or someone from Fire, who already have to be there for the event, in lieu of having a, a police officer to man vendors and where they can park to ensure proper egress for, in case of an emergency. The next one is 4.28. And 4.28 is in regards to the auto burglary alarms. There have been a number of complaints that have come here regarding the car lots. And I am wondering if the city can actually mandate the car lots to not have, not have burglary alarms at all on their cars, not have them on at all. So if that means that they might have to get a private security guard during, in the evenings, that might be an option for them. But since we're looking at this policy right now, is that an option for the, for the, for the city council to look at?
So I'll, I'll just quickly make a comment about that, that that would likely have to have been included in the conditions of approval for, for those businesses. And so I, I think we know of a couple of businesses about which there have been a variety of, of complaints. And so that business is entitled, or businesses are entitled to operate, consistent with those conditions of approval. And I think adding something into the municipal code that's outside of the zoning code that would impose that cost, I think you would, you would see that business, or businesses coming back saying, basically, you can't make me do this. It's not in my conditions of approval. But we can certainly look into, is there any change that we can make to this that would facilitate that?
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. And then, I'm just, I'm just curious, the 4.36, you kind of touched on it for a minute, but for the work permits, what, I'm just curious why the chief of police approves the work permits?
So there is a extensive state regulation, this is for the, the card rooms?
Mm-hmm. Yes, correct.
There is extensive state regulation regarding card rooms and gambling. And it's regulated by the, I'm looking at Lieutenant Johansson. For the name of the state agency that regulates, it's Bureau of?
Gambling.
Thank you.
Gambling.
Gambling. I should have said that, right? Because obviously, it's gambling.
Yeah.
It's not ATF, we, because we know there isn't any of that. So it's extensively regulated, and there's a police presence there, and there's a substantial tie with the police department. So that's the reason for that.
Okay.
Also, it involves significant background checks of the individuals that has to go through law enforcement.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple more. 4, 4.40, the massage. So I am glad to see that there are restrictions on the hours that they're open between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Can we also ask them to turn off their red lights when they close?
So the, the general rule on massage establishments, again dictated by state law, is that we cannot impose any restrictions on them that are more, that are, or are more stringent or different than any other service business. So I don't remember offhand what, what time the signs can be on until for other businesses. We can certainly do that for, for massage businesses for enforcement. I guess I would say that I've been involved in, not personally, a number of activities having to do with regulation of massage businesses. I think the appeals board has seen a number of those things. And I think the, I'll just say that the, the lights is only one, one of, a number of very minor problems that some massage businesses may be having in the city. So the police department does focus there on, really on arrests and prosecutions for, for prostitution and other serious crimes.
Okay.
Including human trafficking.
Yeah, and it's just, some of them stay, stay open, and it's well past nine, so something to look at. And then just, I'm just curious, I was, this was a fascinating section, I must say. The escort services? I, I mean, how, how many?
There's a reason why we didn't suggest any changes to that section.
This, this will be my last comment, but the escort services, I mean, how, how many do we have here in San Bruno?
Actually, I don't know the answer to that. I do know in talking to the police department about that specific section, they didn't suggest any changes. And I think they feel comfortable that they can regulate that. The, that business, I think, has changed over a number of years and is, is now operated differently than it was when this section was adopted. But if Chief or anyone has any comments about that, we can, we can certainly get those.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good comments.
Okay, so I hear the registry, it sounds like everybody's good on that. Mark, did you feel you got enough feedback from council?
Yes, thank you.
On the chapter? Okay. So with that being said, again, it was just to give direction, and then it'll come back. So we'll move on to council announcements. Is there any announcements from council? Marty?
Got a couple announcements and a couple requests for my colleagues. The easy announcements are the American Legion breakfast on Saturday, 9:30. It's a great community event. And Thursday at Bel Air School, there's a second harvest food distribution for those that could use a little bit more food for their family. That's at Bel Air School, 1:30 to 4:30. That's provided by Silicon Valley Second Harvest. And there's a bunch of St. Robert volunteers and San Bruno Lions and community members that go to that.
Just one moment, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to say, so this item, comments from council members, was erroneously not put on this agenda. And so we have to keep our comments, basically, to pancake breakfast or social events, things of that nature. We can't get into anything really substantive, since it's not on the agenda this term.
So asking for a study session on homelessness is out of the question?
So this is really to the discretion of the council. I've tried to be consistent in my advice to the council about not discussing items that aren't on the agenda. Unfortunately, council member comments was inadvertently not placed on the agenda. I think if there's, I guess I would say that if council members would like to say something and suggest something, they can do that. But there shouldn't be any discussion about it. Staff is not going to be making any comments about those things.
So it's okay for a council member to, to make some kind of, not asking for any discussion on it, just putting it forward and moving?
Certainly, I think the city attorney has opined on it as councils, within councils' ability to ask for a study session. One of the other reasons why I think the city attorney has been articulating for new request items to be placed on the agenda is so there can be some discussion around them. For example, study session requests or other things, there may be staff-level comment that could be proffered, that may have an impact on, on what the city council decides. And without it being agendaized, I don't think you'd have the benefit of that information when you're deciding whether to, for example, have a study session on any given topic.
And, and I'm aware that we did have a city retreat where we did talk about items to put on the agenda. I figure that that's going to take a while to develop. Because at the, the San Bruno Lions had a speaker contest, speech contest for students. And, and the topic was homelessness. And there was four great speakers, three from CAP, one from Mills, that commented. And, and it really touched me because it, it's, it, it made me question, are you doing enough? Individually, are you doing enough for homelessness to help, to help the homeless? And, and it's been, the last time the council talked about that was in May of 2018. So that's why I'm, I'm bringing it forward here. I'll keep it really short. I think it's important that we also start looking at, it's been three, four years since we had a study session downtown and actually had a, a meeting and walked to downtown. I think that would be good to, to look at again. And having a development subcommittee to be brought forth, because there's a lot of things going on. And I think it'd be helpful to, to have that subcommittee. So I'll leave it at that.
Michael?
So I was at the community preparedness meeting this, this past week, and they, they thought that they might be up to do their report at this meeting. And I noticed that they dropped off these flyers for the CERT program. And it starts next month, in March. And so since they didn't have their presentation, and I know that they wanted to talk about this, I, I thought I'd go ahead and bring it up, since even if they present at our next meeting, it's still before this. But just to give everybody runway, if they are interested in doing CERT, it starts on March the 11th. And you can go to the city's website, and under the Fire Department section, there's information there on the CERT program. I went through it last year, and I think it was, it was a lot of fun. And I definitely recommend that everybody who is willing and able to go through the program. So that's it for me.
Yeah, I just, I know, we're going to have our policy priority setting meeting in March, I believe? Is that a follow-up?
Yes.
Yes, so March 10th. So I just wanted to ask that, we're going into election season, we, we see it all over the, you know, you just turn on the TV and you open the newspaper, and it's there. And so I really want to talk about campaign finance reform here in San Bruno at that meeting. You know, we, we had an election last year that we're in, traditionally candidates spent less than $10,000, and we had over $100,000 in this race. So I'd really like to look at campaign finance reform for this particular election cycle, if needed, to get something on the ballot by November, if policy-wise, to get something to this council as soon as possible, if the council supports it. I also wanted to ask about speed bumps. I don't know if that would be also at the priority setting meeting, but speed bumps have been requested at White Way, Cressmore, and Cunningham. And I just, that's a question, I'm not sure if that would be the appropriate place, or if TCP? Okay. Good.
Oh, TS.
Okay, so T, TSPC. Okay, so I'll send this over to them. And then if we could also look at the comment, just to follow up on the comment I made earlier, a purchase power procedure or policy where city funds for food is spent here in San Bruno. And we can, we can have a further conversation about that in March, but I think it's worth talking about.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. I was just going to, and, and I was at the, the Lions' speech, so it was, these young people are amazing in their ability. But what I wanted to share with you, I received this email from Paul Hernandez. He's a Vietnam vet. And so I didn't recognize the phone number, but I went ahead and gave him a call. And what he is doing is, he's retired, he's a Vietnam vet, he served. And he is on his own, taking it upon himself to try to encourage folks to write letters of support for him to give to President Trump. And what he's trying to do is, this is in regards to Linda Patterson. Linda Patterson lost her brother in the war in Vietnam. And so upon her getting the news and the family burying him, she began 51 years ago, the adopting, the 101st Airborne, which San Bruno has done. And so we are a part of that, and that's kind of how this came to me. Well, he's from North Carolina. He was great to talk to on the phone. We've talked twice subsequent. I've just got another, I got a text from him today. Took a lot for him to call me Rico, but, because he kept calling me sir. But it was amazing that this gentleman, in his retirement after serving our nation, wants to do what he can to get the Freedom of Medal to this lady, Ms. Patterson, who will be at San Mateo next month. And basically, he reminded me that when he was over there fighting, that the letters that he received, the care packages that he got, were phenomenal. And that it meant the world to the troops that were serving abroad. So once again, as I've always said, one person can make a difference, and it is his personal crusade. And when I called over to City of San Mateo for something, they said, you know what? You must have heard your name being talked about. Paul Hernandez called us and said that he'd spoken to you, and he was trying to coordinate with the City of San Mateo also to give support. So anyway, we'll be getting some more information from him, but I thought it was just interesting. And I think I've got a new friend in North Carolina. So with that, the city council is going to go back into closed session, because we did not finish with the topics that we had. And we're going to be going back in regards to public employee performance evaluation, Government Code Section 54957. With that said, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. And our next meeting will be held on March 10th at 7:00 o'clock right here at the San Bruno Senior Center. Meeting adjourned.